All right, everybody, welcome to the study session of the 21st of September. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Masks are required of all attendees. It looks like everybody today has a mask. I was gonna say if somebody does come to the podium without a mask from now on, I'm gonna say you gotta get out. So the only, even if you say that you've got a medical reason, from now on, you can go get a doctor's note and bring it back. And if you don't like it, then I guess you can sue me. I am probably the biggest opponent, and I'm vocal against, I hate these masks, but it's the law, and we comply with the law in Boulder County, or in Longmont. And the Boulder County Public Health Department and their board have decided that this is what we need to do. And I am not a medical expert. And even if somebody thinks they are, they don't have to come if they don't want to wear their mask. So that's gonna be the order of the day from now on, as long as I'm mayor and that order is in effect. So that said, let's go ahead and do the roll call and then have the pledge.
Mayor Bagley.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Councilmember Adago Ferring.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Peck.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Here.
And Councilmember Waters.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Great, let's have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any motions to direct the city manager to do anything? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to first call public invited to be heard. Actually, this is the study session, so it's the only call to be heard from the public. And it looks like we have a good friend, an old friend who has not been here for a while. She's standing up, Georgetta Johnson. Why don't you come on down?
Yes, I came tonight to make sure I told you that I was a mayor and councilman.
I'm doing your job, Eric.
Thank you for all you nice people that made me feel special.
Oh, yeah, can you, can you put, turn on the mic so we can hear you? And let's start you over on your time.
All right.
So start over.
Thank you. I said, "Good evening, mayor and councilmen that know me and all you nice people that made me feel special." My husband passed two years ago. I don't think I've been here since then or before, and then my son. But anyway, I wanted to tell Brian, you've been a wonderful mayor. Lord bless you. And then I guess I, I wanted to complain a little bit, say some good things and not-so-good things.
Oh, that's good. You're done, that's okay. We can just leave it at that.
No, I'm not gonna say anything really bad. You know me. I like that, I like living in the city of Longmont. So it's a wonderful place, and I wanna keep it a wonderful place. But anyway, I was just gonna say that I think I'm a little bit, I did talk to Brian, or Harold, a little bit about housing. I've lived, it'll be going on five years and the rent keeps going up. And I'm, I was a caregiver for my precious husband for 21 years. So next thing, I'd be out in the street. I think I'm a little too old to go out and work. So anyway, we've had lots of managers, lots of ups and downs. Him and I are gonna discuss it. But I feel like if you've got something to say, come and, we want a good city. And the way we're gonna have a good city is different people hearing what's truth and what's not truth, and working together and doing our part. And of course, you're always gonna have different situations, but right is right, wrong is wrong. That's where I'm at. And so anyway, that's what I was going to say, that, you know, if I, I'll discuss it with him. I, I know lots of people, because I've lived here, I'll be 77 next week. So I've lived here all my life. So I like this city, and I'm the oldest of 10. So, and I wanted to stay that way, but when you get older like this, and I was a caregiver, and then I can't go out and work at this age, I'm a little, I did graduate from the front range when I was 60, and then my husband got really ill, so then I couldn't go out. But I have worked a lot of jobs, but not in years, because I took good care of him. So I guess that's where I'm a little upset right now, is trying to figure this out, why 55 and plus is getting to be assistant living, is what is getting more where I'm at, and trying to up your rent all the time. And they don't feel like I was telling him, you need a phone, or you need internet, or you need a car, otherwise. And it's a nice place, I like it, and I don't wanna move. So that's why I'm coming to, I guess, complain a little bit. But anyway, I feel like that if, if we have something to say, we all are here in this city, and that's how we make it better, is, is come and talk about it and try to work through it, instead of act like it's not worth it. So that's the way I feel. But it's nice seeing you special people, and I'll talk to him about it, because we went through 20 managers, and we've had some good and some not-so caring. So you're living and learning, as we are in this town. I'm seeing different people come, different people leave, you know? And of course, we want, we all work together, fairness and, and housing for where people here, that we've been here all this time. So anyway, Lord bless you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
It was nice seeing you all.
All right, Mark Springfield.
In the interest of time management, I'm gonna read this. Hello, my name's Mark Springfield. I'm chairperson of the library advisory board, and speaking tonight at their request, I wish to discuss the board's concern over the ongoing trend in budgetary support for our library from the city's general fund. The library typically is scored as one of the community's most highly rated institutions on its community satisfaction surveys, 92% on the last version. Of course, any institution's ability to sustain the respect of the community is in part based on the quality of the services it provides and the funding it receives in support of those services. The library's budget as a percent of the general fund's revenue has exhibited a downward trend since at least 2010. As a percentage, it is projected to be 17% lower in 2022 than in 2010. This is the equivalent of over 800,000 in reduced budget authority in the one year alone. Over that 12-year period, reference to accumulated shortfall in the institution budget would be in the millions. Spending per capita currently projected for 2022 is approximately $40 per person. This is lower by 10 to 15% from the last good comparable numbers for the state and national levels. Professionally trained library staff, as noted in the previous feasibility study, was indicated to be approximately 20% lower than state and national levels. Zero funding support for the library's program services comes from the general fund. They are 100% supported by the Friends of the Library, a somewhat unique arrangement. Boulder City has a population roughly similar to Longmont. In addition to their main library, they operate, depending on their circumstances, between two and four additional branches. Their annual budget per capita has in the past been approximately two times the Longmont's budget. With the library district initiative, they are targeting a budget of 20 million, approximately five times Longmont's 2020 estimate. Therefore, in recognition of some of the concerns that these trends indicate, it is the unanimous opinion of the library advisory board that the library is and has consistently been underfunded. A gap exists between Longmont and comparably sized systems. Previous studies have highlighted this gap. The library is on the precipice of not being able to maintain its current level of performance, let alone position it to flourish as a library for the 21st century. The library advisory board strongly encourages the mayor and city council, along with city staff, to revisit funding levels for next year, to reconsider the library's requested support for additional staffing, and its recommendations for more efficient utilization of existing staff via acquisition of labor shifting tools, such as a book sorting system. Thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you. Strider, actually, let's do Cameron McKay.
Oh, you need to go home to do that. No, that's fine. Hold your breath. And are we on here? Mic is on? Okay, great. Cameron McKay, 923 Corey Street. I'm here tonight to ask council to please consider the effects of train horn noise on the students at Columbine Elementary School, as you all decide how to prioritize the railroad quiet zone construction work. First of all, though, I wanna say thank you for getting this quiet zone work done at all. This is just phenomenal. And thank you in particular to the engineers who are working on this project, and especially the one who got the $4 million federal grant to help pay for a huge amount of that. Second, I wanna mention just up front that I do not live in the historic West Side neighborhood. I live north of 9th Avenue, several blocks from the train tracks and train horns are just not an annoyance for me where I live. I'm here tonight, though, because my six-year-old and my nine-year-old attend Columbine Elementary, which sits right along the railroad tracks there, between 6th and Long's Peak Avenues. And I'm asking council to please give due weight to the effects of train horns on my kids and their classmates. Train horn noise at Columbine Elementary does affect the learning environment, and the youngest students are, in fact, the most severely impacted. Many of the preschool, kindergarten, first and second grade classroom windows are less than 100 feet from the train tracks. My second grader is actually in one of these classrooms, and she is not a fan of train horns, she tells me, and they are, in fact, quite loud in the classroom, even though they do have pretty good windows there. At the September 8th school board meeting, the superintendent, Dr. Hadad, cited research that the quality of the school facilities, the learning environment, affects student test scores by up to 15%. I later spoke with him on the phone, and he confirmed that as soon as we get rid of the train, getting rid of the train horn noise will be a benefit to the students of Columbine. So the sooner we can get rid of this noise, the better. Page two of the council communication form for tonight's budget presentation shows that all the necessary work to implement a quiet zone around Columbine will be complete next year, except for 5th Avenue, which won't happen until 2024. Now, I know it is not simple to accelerate the construction work at 5th Avenue. That probably would mean speeding up the city's application to BNSF for a new at-grade crossing at Boston Avenue, which is all detailed in that council communication. But there will be no change to train horn noise at Columbine until that 5th Avenue construction is complete. The sooner it gets done, the sooner the kids at one of our city's lowest-income elementary schools can reap the benefits of an improved learning environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, Strider Benston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Strider Benston, 951 West 17th Avenue. Sorry about the historical side of it. I mentioned 50 years ago last week was the massacre of the prisoners and the guards at Attica Prison. Sent, the state troopers sent in by Governor Rockefeller, who used that to vault himself to become vice president, killing 39 men, at least 10 guards. 10 years ago tonight was the murder execution of Troy Anthony Davis. I spoke here at council when that happened. He was executed by the state of Georgia. There were thousands of people there protesting, and millions of signatures on petitions around the world, including the Pope. Mr. Davis, they had nine close eyewitnesses, one of whom was the one who killed the officer. The seven of them recanted their testimony, said they were tortured or threatened by police, and 13 of 15 distant witnesses. The only one who did not recant testimony was a woman who was standing 100 yards away at night, and Mr. Anthony, Mr. Davis is a dark black man, no light, no moon, and 100 yards away, and she said she identified him. So that was the only witness, except for the professional rat who has a long criminal record, and they'd always put him back out to attack somebody else. This is, the court, the justice was Clarence Thomas, who always voted on the Supreme Court, and still does, to deny rights to all black people except for himself. People say the courts are not a political body. Look what happened when Mayor Garland was denied the right to even have a hearing for a full year, and then they put in Barrett with only two weeks before the election. If we're gonna survive a democracy, or even a republic, we have to wake up and stop this complete politicization of everything, and look at what the country really needs. We have wildfires, we have floods, we have hurricanes, we have denial of voting rights, and I, I was, 1965, the Voting Rights Act. Let's keep it going. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Strider. All right, that'll conclude our public invited to be heard for this evening. And let's move on to special reports and presentations. Actually, do you have a COVID update, Harold?
I do, I can.
Yeah, we did. But we'll go, Harold, let's go ahead with the COVID-19 update.
Mayor, council, this is when you can see the seven-day cumulative case count. And so you can see we are trending in the right direction. They, Boulder County adjusted the slides this time, where you can see the high transmission rate versus the lower levels. And it's really the high transmission rate that's the, the key to some of the, the recent mask mandate and what they're looking at. So we are moving in the right direction. The interesting piece, when you look at this, is, so generally, the state numbers are moving down. But what's interesting is that when you look at all of the metro counties in terms of where the case rates are going, they're all either staying the same or going up, but for Boulder and Douglas County. And, and so this is good news for Boulder County, but if you can see, there is a lot of growth in cases adjacent to Boulder County, and that was a topic of some conversation today. Again, generally, what we're seeing, again, this is just more in terms of the case trends that we're seeing and what that's looking like. And so for us, we just, this is good news. What's interesting in this, and this did come up in our admin conversation today, is you can see that, that Longmont is now a larger percentage of the cases based on where we used to be. And they're starting to look at, to see if that's a trend in terms of what we're seeing with communities on, on the eastern side of the county. And hopefully, we'll have more information there on that. One of the questions last week was about hospitalizations in the past week for the region, and so the numbers we can give you are regional numbers. So the north-central region, so their ICU availability is under 20%. Their med surgical bed availability is under 20%. Hospitals are reporting tight staffing, and 20% are showing that they're having significant staff shortages. The northern, the north-central region is also continuing to take patients from other states. And then the combined hospital transfer center plan is activated at Level 1, which means that non-emergency surgeries are being postponed at this time. So that's really answering the question in terms of what we're seeing in, in this region in terms of hospitalization. So they're being pressed. This is also talking about the cases are still exceeding the epidemiological capacity, meaning the ability to trace. And that's what the, the county's trying to deal with. You're not seeing here, we did have one more death recently that's not on this chart that we just learned about, but you can see that there, there have been more recently. And then, when we look at the testing, the numbers are going down, the positivity rate looks like it's spiking a little bit. But then, in terms of vaccination, when we look at the percent of total population, Boulder County's at about 68.3% of vaccinated individuals of the eligible, or, so you gotta go down, 73.3%, but of the eligible, it's 82.7% when you're looking at this, when it's combined with the first vaccine. So that's really the update today, in the slides that they gave us. The numbers are trending where we want to. The hospitals are seeing, are being pressed on both capacity side and staffing, and they're continuing to watch that. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know there was a question from council, sorry, there was a question from Councilmember Rodriguez about the concept of herd immunity, and what does that look like? I did talk to Camille when she was here, and they're, they're looking to see if they, there's any information on that. They weren't aware of anything at that meeting. So as soon as we get it, we'll let you know.
Okay. Councilmember, let's see here, let's go with Councilmember Waters. Hold on one second. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Harold, the slides aren't numbered, so I would give you one, but it's the hospitalization. It's the same question. I understand, I think you were trying to answer the question I asked last week, that capacity, we, we have to, we're thinking about capacity different right now because of staffing issues, right? When the hospitals were fully staffed, the numbers of beds.
Correct.
Was the metric, or the measure. That's, that's only relative to staffing capacity, right?
Correct.
So if we still had a dial, right, I understand we're not using dials, but one of the dials we used to see is on hospital capacity and where we were from green to red. If you applied, I know this is kind of asking you off the top of your head to make this up, but if we were, if we were looking at a dial to reflect the combination of hospitalizations, staff, and bed availability, what would our dial look like here?
We'd probably be in the red.
Yeah, that would be my suspicion.
Let me look real quick and see if there's another place where I can find it. Um, yeah, we would be in the red, yellow range, depending on what specific component we were looking at. So we're in the red now, available ICU beds. On the med search beds, we're in the red. The vents aren't really a big issue anymore.
Just because of supply.
Right, and there's a different issue, they're having other data issues on their website. But yeah, we'd typically be red or high-yellow.
Yeah, and I, I guess there's not much to do about that, other than to acknowledge it, and, and again, use that to encourage public to get vaccinated, and, and to acknowledge that you made a reference to some of what we're experiencing as Longmont, as a percent, higher, 39% of total cases in Boulder County compared to 28% in Boulder, being the east county effect.
That was what they brought up today, and so it's hard to say, but what they, what the, what the, the Boulder County Health Department did say is they're trying to assess what's, is there a difference on the eastern side of the county versus other areas? Because if you can see, when you look up until about, I think that says August.
August 23rd.
You could kinda see where we were all.
Yeah.
It made sense, based on, when you look at population and those types of things, and then all of a sudden, you can start seeing the difference here. And, and that's what they're starting to try to look into, to see, are we getting more exposures here, just because of?
Well, I don't, and I don't wanna reignite the Weld County, Boulder County, you know, debate, but, but the numbers that we saw in Weld County obviously are substantially higher than in Boulder County on average. That, that's what they're talking about.
Correct.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
All right, let's go ahead, Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. So Harold, in your conversations, was it mentioned as the newest report that came out, that the efficacy of the Pfizer and Moderna has dropped, as far as, I think in some cases, it was supposed to be eight months, eight or nine months, and it's dropped to six months with a 40% efficacy rate? So my question is, of the hospitalizations, is there data on how many of those have been vaccinated? Because.
Go ahead.
Okay, because those cases of people getting the Delta variant that have been vaccinated seem to be rising in some parts of the country.
So obviously, they were, they were still pulling data, so the, the slide deck we had wasn't as robust as what we normally get.
Okay.
I think to your point is, in terms of the breakthrough cases, there are, they are seeing more breakthrough cases. But I think when you look at the general, and at least what's being communicated to me, the general efficacy of the vaccination is still there. You are much less likely to get it if you're vaccinated, must let, much, even more or less likely to go to the hospital, and even more or less likely to go into critical care if you're vaccinated. What they, what you are seeing, and again, I'm not gonna play a physician on this, but the data that I'm reading is that if you're an individual with other underlying health conditions and, and older, then the likelihood, if you do get it and you were vaccinated, you have a higher likelihood of, of getting into those other categories. And I think that's when you can see what's happening with the FDA, when they said they wanna prioritize the booster component, with those that have other underlying medical conditions, older adults in that world, because I think they're really talking about that. And if you look at it, most of those vaccinations occurred in January. January and February. So we really are now starting to get in that eight-month range. And so I think that's part of what they, what they were really looking at. They were obviously planning for a different approach on boosters, but with the FDA information, they're gonna focus on the target populations. But I know I probably didn't answer your question, but.
No, you did. Basically, I just wanted to get that information out to the public. But also, to that point, Walgreens is giving booster shots, and you can go on their website and sign up. They're giving them every 15 minutes. So if you feel that you are in that eight, nine-month, or whatever it is, depending on what shot you got, then I would suggest you get that booster shot. I know I'm gonna sign it forward ASAP.
And, and that's what they're starting to try to look into to see, are we getting more exposures here just because of?
Well, I don't, and I don't want to reignite the Weld County, Boulder County, you know, debate. But, but the numbers that we saw in Weld County obviously are substantially higher than in Boulder County on average. That, that's what they're talking about.
Correct.
Yeah. All right. Thanks.
All right, let's go ahead. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. So Harold, in your conversations, was it mentioned as the newest report that came out that the efficacy of the Pfizer and Moderna has dropped as far as, I think in some cases it was supposed to be eight months, eight or nine months, and it's dropped to six months with a 40% efficacy rate. So my question is, of the hospitalizations, is there data on how many of those have been vaccinated? Because.
Go ahead.
Okay, because those cases of people getting the Delta variant that have been vaccinated seem to be rising in some parts of the country.
So obviously they were, they were still pulling data, so the, the slide deck we had wasn't as robust as what we normally get.
Okay.
I think to your point is, in terms of the breakthrough cases, there are, they are seeing more breakthrough cases. But I think when you look at the general, and at least what's being communicated to me, the general efficacy of the vaccination is still there. You are much less likely to get it if you're vaccinated, must let, much even more or less likely to go to the hospital and even more or less likely to go into critical care if you're vaccinated. What they, what you are seeing, and again, I'm not going to play a physician on this, but the data that I'm reading is that if you're an individual with other underlying health conditions and, and older, then the likelihood, if you do get it and you were vaccinated, you have a higher likelihood of, of getting into those other categories. And I think that's when you can see what's happening with the FDA, when they said they want to prioritize the booster component with those that have other underlying medical conditions, older adults in that world, because I think they're really talking about that. And if you look at it, most of those vaccinations occurred in January, January and February. So we really are now starting to get in that eight month range. And so I think that's part of what they, what they were really looking at. They were obviously planning for a different approach on boosters, but with the FDA information, they're going to focus on the target populations. But I know I probably didn't answer your question, but.
No, you did. Basically, I just wanted to get that information out to the public. But also to that point, Walgreens is giving booster shots. And you can go on their website and sign up. They're giving them every 15 minutes. So if you feel that you are in that eight, nine month or whatever it is, depending on what shot you got, then I would suggest you get that booster shot. I know I'm going to sign it forward ASAP, so.
Yeah, and I know that the governor was pretty specific in terms of if you have an underlying health condition, you just need to say that you have an underlying health condition and they're supposed to be able to.
Right. Okay.
Get you through the system.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I don't know how I managed to do this, but I missed the call for agenda revisions and would like to know if there is still an opportunity to add one. It's sort of related to the current topic.
I'm sorry, say again. I'm sorry, say again. I was, I thought you were talking to Harold.
No, I missed the opportunity. I don't know how. I'm embarrassed. But I missed the opportunity to add something to a future agenda. It's related to this topic and I would like to know, Mr. Mayor, if.
That, that, that's fine. Does anyone object to her speaking? Okay, nobody cares, so go ahead.
Okay. It is difficult for everyone, for us to be meeting in person masked under the current conditions. And we have been unable to obtain an ASL interpreter, which I think is very unfair to hearing impaired persons trying to come and understand the, the city council meetings and what's going on. I would like to have, as soon as possible, to have the council vote on whether we should reconsider the idea of going back to online meetings.
Do you guys, do you guys want to talk about that now?
I will, but I've just.
No, 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 I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, can we talk about that briefly now? I, I mean, I, we voted to meet with masks. I was in the dissent. So I don't remember who was with me in the dissent. I, I want to meet Zoom with masks, but I don't, I don't get a vote unless you guys, somebody makes a motion in the majority to, to change it. I'm only bringing it up now. If anybody thinks it's inappropriate, we won't talk about it. We'll put it on the next agenda. It's just that if we put it on the next agenda, we're almost, I mean, we're.
Yeah. I would like to, to discuss and vote now, and I voted to meet in person, so I think I can make that motion.
Okay. So does anyone object to talking about it now, or we will put it on the next agenda? Councilmember Peck? Hold on a second. Okay, Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. We have such a pretty packed agenda tonight. I, I would move that we would put it on the next council meeting to talk about it.
Okay, so the only way, okay, it's been moved and seconded to put on the next council meeting agenda. The only way around that, that is what we do. So there are ways around that, but if nobody wants to take those actions or doesn't know how, then, then I won't stop them. So anybody want to say anything about this? We'll just put it on the next agenda? Was that, okay, cool. Anyone object to putting on the next agenda? All right, let's just go ahead and put it on the next agenda, Harold. That's okay. Oh yeah, but there was, technically we have to vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Let's put it on the next agenda, please. Thank you, Councilmember Martin. All right, Harold, let's go on to the budget items. Jim? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Teresa Malloy, Budget Manager. And this is not working. So in your council packet, we did have four things, I believe, that were follow-up items from the council meeting on August 31st. We do plan to touch on one of those items for you this evening. And that'll be the quiet zones. And the rest of them, we don't plan on actually including in our presentation. However, there will be an opportunity at the end. If, if we need to, to talk about those, we certainly can. And so we, as you mentioned, we do have a, a pretty busy conversation with you this evening. It's going to include a variety of staff. And, and we're just going to get started. These are all the topics. They were listed in your packet. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tyler.
So I'm actually going to jump in ahead on this one and before Tyler. So I know there was a question regarding the timing of the project on, and then I'll have Tyler come up if we need to get into. Sorry. If we need to get into more details on this one. I wanted to provide council with some background on, on the, the quiet zone issue that's at, in, at hand because when we look at the, the schedule itself, there's a lot of components to it. So we have two issues at play. We have the quiet zone conversation that was funded in terms of what we, we looked at, that you all saw that was in your, your packet. We also have the crossing with Boston, so we can connect Boston across the railroad. And those two are connected to each other as, as we're looking at this. So I want to talk a little bit about the crossing, the Boston crossing at the railroad and kind of what we're looking at there. So one of the issues is historically, we, we have approached the PUC before and we tried to get the crossing approved. And we did not submit any other closings with that and the PC, PUC denied that. We are in conversations now with the PUC to look at what we can do in order to get that crossing of Boston there, so we can get traffic on that. That's important for a couple of reasons. One, we talked about BRT and the transit center that we're looking to build and what we need to do. Two, we do know that there's a lot of traffic that, that really impacts the West Side neighborhood on Third Street. And so that's part of this, this conversation. And doing that, we need to look at options and we've talked to council about the different options and what we can do. If I haven't said this, I'll say it now. We have begun conversations with the PUC. And our goal is to get to the PUC as quickly as we possibly can. When you look at the quiet zones and, and they put Fifth Avenue at the end of, of that schedule, it really is connected to the work that we're trying to do with the PUC and what we have to figure out and how we're going to be able to move on this other project. I definitely hear from the residents. I know I've been involved in a number of conversations, primarily with Rick Jacoby and others who were, who were doing this. We've been involved in conversations when we looked at the Fifth Avenue option in terms of how the neighborhood looks at that. So we definitely understand the need to move this forward. What I can tell you today is my goal and my intent is we need to get through and, and really figure out the PUC piece as it's associated with Boston. Once we can understand that, that gives us some flexibility in terms of what we're looking at with the schedule and the quiet zones, so we can really get that stretch dealt with on, on the front end of it. And so I wanted you all to know that because it's, it's kind of caught in two projects. But, but the intent is we definitely hear what the neighborhood's saying. And, and my goal is whatever we can do to get it done in 2022, but we need to get through the PUC piece first. I don't know if that answers council's questions on this issue. I'd be happy to bring Tyler up to help me with the technical components.
Dr. Waters?
Yeah, I, I want to comment on that. I, I had another question. Can, can I comment on this and then get back to my other question? What I just heard you say, Harold, is that regardless of where this, how this is laid out, there's no intent to leave Fifth Avenue until 2024 as part of a solution. It's the question of what we're going to do with Fifth Avenue.
Correct.
And there's some other decisions that have to be made.
Absolutely.
So for parents of children at Columbine Elementary School, to the superintendent who has contacted several of us out of concern, you know, for what that does to the learning environment, the message is, we are not, we do not intend to wait to 2024 to bring some solution to bear specifically around Columbine Elementary School. Is that fair?
That's my intent, yes.
Can I ask my other question?
May.
When we, was it the 31st? When did we get the, the 31st, we got the cap, the CIP budget? And, you know, but that meeting went long into the night. We were, you know, we, we're going to have a chance to answer questions. Tonight was the night we were going to get a chance to follow up. And I saw what Teresa listed as things we're not going to address and I, and I'm not, that's okay. The things that I want to, that I have questions about for the most part will be in what's already laid out in the council communication that we're going to work through. But there's one that's not, and I, I was, I would have asked it on the 31st. Ask it tonight, because it's not on the budget. My question is, what would it take to get on the budget? And, and that is the completion of the Yew Creek Golf Course project that's, that started in 1996, right? We've had an unfinished project in the queue for 25 years or, yeah, or more now. I was going to raise it then. It just, I, I, I don't know how many projects have been sitting in a queue for 25 years waiting to be completed. And I, given all the things we need to do in the city, I'm certain there are folks who go, what? Why would you worry about that, given, you know, the health and safety issues and the, this Safety and Justice Center project that's still waiting to be funded with bond money and the maintenance shed that's still not, you know, finished? And we're probably going to need to augment that with, with other funding. But I was, I had the question then, and then subsequent to the question that night during the, the art walk. I had the, it was fun to stop by the museum booth just after the time capsule had been opened, right? And so it was fun to see all the documents that had been placed in a time capsule in 1996. And one of those, one of the documents in the time capsule was the layout for Yew Creek Golf Course, interestingly enough. And I wondered in that moment, who put that document in the time capsule? The, the enthusiasm they must have had for the project that it was that important in 1996? And if they had any concept that 25 years later, the project wouldn't be finished, still waiting in a queue, even for the first dollar to be budgeted, right, towards accruing the funding to finish what we started in 1996? So I don't know if that's an answer tonight, that, but, but it seems odd to me that it just sits there this long and we don't address it one way or another.
So that's when I, if you saw me roll over to Jim and go, that was really the other questions at the end, knowing that there were probably going to be some of those.
Okay, all right, we can get to it then at the end.
And so we should have been more clear on that one.
It just didn't show up on the, it was, all right, I'll wait till then. Thanks.
All right, let's go ahead with Councilmember, Councilmember, oh my, come on. Councilmember Christensen. We have, you're, you're not next in the queue, but you have not spoken, so we'll go ahead and speak with you.
Okay, I'm going to try to speak more loudly because I was told that I couldn't be heard last time, so forgive me if I'm loud. You know, I, I think all of us can appreciate how, how difficult it'd be for a little kid to try to be concentrating and periodically interrupted by a really loud train horn. So that, that, if there was a way to prioritize that, I'm sure we would. But engineering has to prioritize things in a realistic way. And sometimes other things have to be done before you can build the other thing. So I, I would like to just reiterate what Councilman Waters said, that we're not in any way trying to put that at the tail end of the line. But we do have to figure out other things first. And other people, another thing I would like to say is that some people have objected to the fact that we have to close Fifth Avenue. Well, that isn't something we can negotiate. That is something that the federal train authority requires us to do if we're going to have a quiet zone for some of these things. So they asked for the quiet zone, but the deal is then Fifth Avenue will have to be closed. And I, I am really opposed to closing any streets because it makes it very difficult in the long run. However, in this case, if it would get the kids a quiet zone, yeah, then we should definitely do it. So I, I would just ask for people to have a little forbearance that there's no weird stuff going on. We're trying to do the, do the best we can and the city engineers and the city planners are doing the very best they can to try to get this, this issue of quiet zones resolved. But it does require us to be thrifty with the money we have. It requires us to be, to, to do engineering in a methodical and orderly fashion rather than prioritize things emotionally that we would like to do, but can't actually do because in the long run, it, the best, we have to prioritize what's best for the town. And so if this is a bit later, the two years it's scheduled for, but hopefully it won't be, it just depends. So please understand that no one is trying to harm our kids. We want nothing but the best for these, these kids. And I certainly do empathize with the frustration of parents whose kids are having to put up with this. But hopefully we can get this all fixed within the next few years. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I'd like to add to ask that question as a question because we all got a, a letter from a resident of the historic East Side. We all heard what Mr. McKay has to say. And the city manager's explanation didn't quite tell me what I wanted to know. What I want to know is what has to happen specifically with regard to the PUC or engineering or anything? What are the milestones that we have to accomplish in order to get Columbine Elementary School out of the quiet, into a quiet zone in 2022? What are the specific steps that has to happen?
So.
All right, and then, and then I'm going to say, let's go ahead and finish this, but I want, we can, we're, we're starting to stray from the budget.
No, we're not. This is particularly relevant.
I'm saying, we can argue about it, but I've got the gavel till November, okay? And I'm saying, we want to get back to the budget rather than talk about quiet zones currently. That's what I'm saying. So go ahead and answer. That's what I'm saying. It's fine, but after this, I want to go back to Mr. Golden. That's it.
So, so you have two paths. There, there's two paths that are in play. And so one is, as, as we talked about and Councilmember Christian, Christensen referenced in terms of, when we talked about the quiet zones, we talked about the need to, for closure of Fifth or potential closure of Fifth in order to accomplish that based on what the PUC has said. What we are, we're in conversations now to make sure that we're exploring all options so that we have more options in the end potentially. So we need to get through the PUC and see how they're going to, how we're going to move through it and what they're going to require of us to do that. If there's other options in play, we're theoretically, let's say theoretically Fifth isn't in play, then I've got to, then we've got to figure out financially how to pull Fifth into 2022. Because my point is, I don't want to spend millions of dollars for a quiet zone and we don't have a quiet zone because we have a crossing that's not there. But it is all hinging in the conversation that we have with the PUC and that's what we have to work through.
So that sounds like the answer is we don't exactly know.
Until we get through and deal with the PUC in terms of what they're going to look at for the crossing on Boston, that's a big part of this conversation. Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Martin, just a couple of quick thoughts on this. Staff gets, gets it, to get the quiet zone implemented as soon as possible, top priority in the downtown, in the East Side neighborhoods. We get that. I, I cannot stand here tonight though and say that in 2022, we, we have to have Third, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth and Seventh done.
Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh done. So your question of, what does it take for us to have it done in 2022? I don't believe it's possible to have it done in 2022. I do think, however, the city should collaborate and work with the school district to look at all solutions with Columbine on a shorter notice, or a shorter time track, no, no pun intended there, but a, on a shorter approach. Possibly we could look at soundproofing of the school, and to assist in those kinds of things, because the children that are there now will be out of Columbine by the time where, you know, we got this done. And I don't, I don't think any of us wanna wait that long. And so I just didn't wanna leave the impression, though, that by this time next year, or by the end of next year, we would be there. I, I, I think we're overselling what, we're at the mercy of the railroad. As Harold said, we're at the, we, we have to get these situations cleared up with regards to Boston Avenue. That's one step with the PUC. The bigger issue at the end of the day is all this work, 90% of it anyway, needs to be done by the railroad. We are not in control of the timing of that. We can do everything we can to incentivize it, we can do, you know, we're paying for it, for gosh's sake, but I just didn't wanna leave, anyway, I just wanna emphasize, we got the message, we know it's the top priority, it has been, and it's a very difficult and frustrating process to go through.
So I think part of it, to, to get, so we're funding, we have programmed to fund all of those intersections in 2022. The, the, the funding is there in 2022, the one that is not there in 2022 is Fifth. We've all talked about Fifth being connected to the other conversation with the PUC on the crossing for Boston. So there, there's, there's a connection point there. What Dale's talking about on the other side is, BNSF then has to do the work. And so what we can control is to say, the funding's here, and here's where we're going and, and do that. Dale was making a very good point of, there's a bit of lack of control on this in terms of how BNSF proceeds and what they do, and that we can't guarantee in, in this process. So I don't know if that answered your question, but really, the PUC piece is a big piece, to then knowing what path we go forward on, in that, is it a closure, or is it bringing money in to try to do it and fund it?
Sure, and, and it's, it's really that, that the explanation wasn't complete, and I know we talked about the ordering of crossings a really long time ago now. And I don't remember why the East Side end has to have a node at the very tail end. That's what I would've liked to hear.
A node at the?
Fifth Avenue. It's the last one. Why?
Because we didn't know what the timing was gonna be on the PUC side, and that's where I'm saying, we are now in conversations with the PUC, very focused on getting that done as quickly as we possibly can. Once we know the answer to that, then it's our job as staff to find a way to bring the funding forward, so we can bring all of these together as close as we can with the BNSF doing the work.
So a reordering would be possible?
Yes, that's exactly what we're saying.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was getting way into the weeds, so.
All right, let's go ahead.
I think we're good on this one, Tyler.
I'm happy to give you all your time back.
Okay, we're gonna move into the one-time expenses in both the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund, and these are recapped in, for the General Fund, in Attachment K. I do want to bring to your attention, before I cover what's on the slide, that we need to replace what was provided to you in your packet and out on our website, because there was an error. And so that will get updated then, out on our website. Let me tell you really quickly what the changes are. So it is on the second page of Attachment K, under the one-time services or expenses, it's also page S76. In, about the, kind of the middle section there, there is the textile storage move to the museum storage building. That is not $60,000, that's $40,000. So, so that will be updated. And then the, the one that says swaps, that one at $40,000, that one should be, instead of swaps, that is the recreation master plan update. We did not fund swaps in '22. So again, this will be a replacement that we will put out on the website for you. Total amount does not change, it's just the description on one and the amount on the other. One, one was 40, one was 60. And so total one-time expenses in the General Fund is 8.346 million, and that is offset by $3.8 million of, of revenue and reserve fund balances, as shown up here on the slide, the largest of which is the property tax at, at 2.366 million, as well as 483,000 of use tax. So those are one-time sources that we use to offset the total one-time expenses. There is also a reserve in the General Fund fund balance for Bon Farm. It's a reserve that we've been carrying for quite some time now, and since we are funding the, that portion of the Bon Farm project in '22, we're, we're gonna use that reserve as well. So the net one-time expenses in the General Fund is $4.5 million. And as we typically do, we categorize them in four different categories. Capital at $573,000. IT, equipment and technology improvements at one point, just under $5 million, 1.5. Non-capital, small equipment and supplies at 177. That is mainly equipment to, to go along with our new FTE, and then things that are not, do not reach the, the capital threshold. And then one-time services or expenses is the largest category, at just under $6.1 million. So that is the one-time in, in our General Fund. And then in Attachment L is the, the complete list of one-time in the Public Safety Fund. It totals $733,000, and again, categorized in those four same categories as we do in the General Fund. $169,000 in capital equipment. IT, technology improvements is $316,000. The small equipment and supplies of $239,000. Again, a good portion of that has to do with the new positions. And then one-time services or expenses is just under $8,000. And then, as we do in every other budget process, we also have a financial policy around incremental development revenue. And basically, our policy says that any new dwelling units above the, the 200-unit threshold is considered incremental development revenue, and we use that for one-time and/or ongoing that would be subject to reduction, should the, the revenue fall below that threshold. And in our '22 budget, as Jim mentioned last week, we have 867 new dwelling units. So essentially, the, the equivalent revenue from 667 of those is what is making up this incremental development revenue of $619,000. It comes from both building permits, $564,000 of it, and then another $55,000 from plan And this is the list of the items that we're funding with the incremental development revenue. A good portion of it is ongoing, as it has been in prior years. I will tell you that there are two positions that we are funding currently in our 2021 budget, from incremental development revenue, that we have now moved out from, from being funded with incremental development revenue, to being funded with ongoing revenue in, in, in the Public Safety Fund, and that is the fire inspection position, fire inspector position. That one's been moved to ongoing funded in the Public Safety Fund. And then a housing and community specialist was also being funded from incremental development revenue, and that one, we have now moved to the Affordable Housing Fund. So we didn't eliminate the positions, it's just we've shifted the funding source from incremental development revenue to ongoing revenue in those two funds. And so total ongoing uses for our incremental development revenue in 2022 is $585,000. It covers those items on the upper part of the screen here. And then we have one, one item that is partially offset by incremental development revenue, and that is the Envision Long Law Update. And so our total incremental development revenue in the budget is just under $620,000. And with that, I'm gonna now turn it over to Karen and staff.
Yeah, we can. Let's go with, this time, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. In the IT improvements, I, you have not much, not much detail in terms of line item detail, and there are, there are two systems, reordering or improvement projects that are needed that I hear about on a, at least a weekly basis. One of them is access, access to human services functions. They're just really hard to find on the website, and I think part of it is because, some of it is by one, one application, and another one is another application. But I will tell you, the most important thing on there is to be able to complain about a habitability defect in, in a rental unit. It is impossible to find, because it's buried way down in the, in the permitting system, when it really ought to be up with the other human services links, like how to get rental assistance. And so I think that the reordering of that, and, and the, improving the accessibility of that website, is a real important problem, that I want to understand is funded, or wanna, wanna go for making sure that it is funded while we have this chance to give direction. The other one is the amenities ticketing situation. You know, you can't buy a, a pass to Union Reservoir, you can't, you can't reserve swim lanes, you know, you can't do any of that stuff. You have to, it, it's just really difficult, and nobody can, you know, can find it, and they end up going and buying the, the pass or the ticket in person. Hear about that all the time. So are those projects funded for 2022, or are they not?
Councilmember Martin, I'm gonna have to ask for some support from behind me to answer those questions.
She's there.
I'm right behind you. Thanks, Teresa. Mayor Bagley, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. I would say yes, and sort of. So with the ticketing that you're talking about, we need to take a look a little bit more at that. We just redesigned all the RecTrack pages recently, to try to make them easier to use, but it sounds like maybe we need to do a little bit more work. So let me, let's, let's chat offline, until I can find out a little bit more about the issues that are happening there. We do try to use single software as much as we can, so we do use RecTrack for not only recreation events, but also museum events, and, and other, other things that you can pay for and reserve online. So I, I'd love to hear more about what the concerns are there, because I'm sure that there are some things that we can do. It just was redesigned recently, they just upgraded that product, so there, there's some things that we should look at, it sounds like.
So that was the easy part, and the least, less important part.
The other one.
What about being able to complain about your landlord?
Yeah, the other one. So you will notice that in the, in the proposed budget is money for a web redesign, and so we'll be taking a look at all of the, kind of, end-user feedback that we get for those things. The other piece is that that seems like that might be a more simple fix, so that, let me, let me take a look at that one, and work with our web team to see if there's another place we can look.
Yeah, I think that one is in the permitting application, and, and all the other stuff having to do with human service isn't.
Yeah, we need to get with Joni on that one, because there's a component where there's a link issue on that, but I think that goes into the web redesign, in terms of...
Okay.
...spreading the user interface on this, because we've all had different issues at different times finding it.
Plus, we can always link things in, in many different ways, as you know, right?
Yes, I do.
So just because it's housed in one area, doesn't mean that we can't also link it in community services. So, yeah, so let me find out a little bit more about the specifics, and I'm happy to work through some solutions.
Yeah, can, can we, you know, as, as ombudsman's for the public, we can feed issues into that system, may we?
Of course.
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Of course, they're there for the public to let us know what's happening.
Okay.
But budget-wise, we, I think the one thing that really does probably affect the most is that we, we do have a web redesign funded in the budget for...
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Councilmember, Councilmember Christensen. Hold on a sec, there we go.
Thank you. We, I believe Teresa said we were not going to discuss the library unless we asked for it. I would like to, I would like to discuss the library, because...
We, we are, that, that's, we are, we have that on the list.
Oh, okay, good. Secondly, there is an item, $240,000 fund balance reserved for Bon Farm. I'm wondering why that is still on there. Bon Farm is for sale, it has been for sale for months. The land is for sale, all of it. And so that project clearly has fallen through, and we need to take that out of there. Perhaps we could give it to the library?
So I think that funding, how did the funding for Bon Farm come in?
We were going to help them with a park project on the east side of it, that connected to the little, the little neighborhood park.
Mayor and councilmembers, David Bell, Director of Parks and Natural Resources. The Bon Park...
David, you gotta wear your mask.
Oh, sorry. The mayor said I had to leave if I took it off.
Good try.
I apologize. Bon Park was put back, I believe, 2005, when that development was gonna go in, there was a recognition that area, the city needed some additional park space. The developer said they would help contribute that. There were dollars set aside when that project became funded, and the developer was ready to move forward, that we would use those dollars to assist with that. At this point, as far as I know, the developer's not ready to move forward, we still have the dollars, it's not in any of my staff's project list right now, to move forward until that development.
So until we know whether we're going to actually be able to work with the developer to put a park in, they were holding that in reserve just for the, the park on the east...
Yes.
Of our east side, yeah, okay.
Going back and looking at things, I think that, say, that was actually put in there in 2005.
But did the developer put the money in, the 240, or was that city?
That was the city.
That was the city. Those dollars are just there to hold that for the, the city's portion.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are you done, Councilmember Christensen?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay. Oops, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Harold, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley, members of council, Christina Pacheco, Division Manager, Children, Youth and Families. In 2021, four contracts for service were awarded to organizations, early childhood organizations to provide mobile preschool learning opportunities, open additional preschool programs, preschool classrooms, provide parent education and provide professional coaching and training for providers. In 2022, staff is proposing that one-time funds will address data collection regarding the need for additional childcare, early learning slots to serve Longmont families. Creating a data system to track this need for additional slots will help us know what's going on at any given time. It'll help providers and early childhood system focus future investments to address capacity issues on an ongoing basis. Staff will continue to work with What Works Cities to obtain technical assistance in order to identify exactly what we need around the demand for data in childcare. Staff will also continue to work on building the capacity of providers that serve the Longmont community and provide opportunities for both formal and informal training and the education of early childhood professionals. We'll work with collaborators on how to utilize the funding to support infrastructure needs of childcare businesses and organizations. We've collaborated, we've explored different ideas with our collaborators through Bright Eyes and the Longmont Early Childhood Community Coalition. We've explored the idea of using funding as incentives as it's not feasible to use one-time funds to increase childcare staff wages. Other options could be considered such as using funding for bonuses. We know that there's organizations who aren't reopening classrooms and are going as far as closing existing classrooms because of staff shortages. Working with these childcare organizations is essential at this time in order to maintain at a minimum the current level of resources while continuing to work on increasing resources in this particular area. That is me, I'll be ready to go to the next one.
Good evening, Mayor and council, my name is Karen Roney. Whoops, there we go. With the Community Services Department and I am pinching this evening for Jeff Friesner, who was unexpectedly called away to deal with another issue. So what I wanted to talk just briefly about is the situation with recreation. So it certainly has been one of the services within the city that has been impacted pretty significantly by COVID. And so in the 2021 budget, we did reduce the recreation budget by 1.1 million dollars. And so we were starting to build back up. You know, we had a reduction in the number of people coming to recreation services. It hovered around 560 people a day. We were starting to jump a little bit back up with the masking order that was just reenacted by Boulder County Public Health. Our attendance has dropped down a little bit. It's hanging in there, but it did decrease a little bit. So, you know, we're doing our best to try to make sure that we can operate as best possible in the conditions in which we are all living. In the 2022 budget, we did add back in 120,000 from an increase over 2021. And that basically is, sorry, my mask is full, and that basically is to hopefully fund a full season of our operation for the outdoor ice rink, to be able to open a Kanamono swimming pool, which we did not open this past year, for $40,000, and to hopefully offer a reduced version of Rhythm on the River this next summer. And that's about a $50,000 cost that we added back into the 2022 budget. So again, this is kind of what we talked about last year at this time, is that we will come back and make program adjustments based on what is happening within the community with our attendance, with COVID, and that if we will come back to council and adjust revenues up or down depending on the attendance and in our recreation program. So if we have additional revenues and we want to be able to offer enhanced programming, we will come back to council as well as if we need to do some constricting of our budget, we will also come back to council with that. Hopefully that's not the case, but that's what we would be prepared to do.
So as Karen said, this has been the one area that has been impacted the most by COVID. And I want to really reiterate that even when the restrictions were coming off, we still weren't back at where we were in terms of people coming into the facility, which does impact what we can do. I'm going to say this to council now because we're trying to think about what we can do to ensure that we can have more activities and have more people come in where they feel safe. And, you know, the county did today introduce a component of what you can do in terms of if you require people to be vaccinated when you come into the facility. I've thrown that to Karen and her group to evaluate what that could look like and can that push us back from a revenue standpoint to see if we can bolster that. We don't know where we're going to be on that, but we think we need to at least examine it as we're moving forward because what we can tell you is people weren't coming back to the same level that they were even when the restrictions were lifted. And we're going to have to look at that in order to continue to provide many of the recreation services that we used to provide. So that may be coming back for a conversation sooner rather than later.
We are certainly embracing that opportunity to look at that exemption. All right, so next I'm going to invite Alberto Mendoza to come up and talk about the increased set aside funding for human service agencies.
Okay, thank you.
I think you got a question.
Councilmember Hidoga Faring.
Thank you, don't go, Karen, come back.
I won't.
Thank you. So I do have a couple of questions. So one, when the recreation center was open, were there instances of outbreaks or COVID cases, you know, positive cases that kind of ran through the rec center or had it stayed pretty good with mitigating when they were open?
We certainly, we did not have reports of COVID cases that came to our attention that I certainly am aware of. So, you know, I think people were very vigilant about doing what was needed to be able to enjoy the recreation center again, so.
Yeah, and so the only reason why I point that out is, you know, because there is some hesitancy in going back to some of these fitness centers, recreation centers. But, you know, for the public to know that, you know, we haven't had a series of outbreaks and we were able to mitigate and keep the facility safe for people who utilize those areas, those spaces. The other thing, I wanted to go back to the, and I had another question, but it kind of slipped away, but to the Rhythm on the River. So typically, and I think, I don't think that's a source of revenue for us. Is that something where the city does make money off of it or is it more just as a community engagement opportunity?
Councilmember Hidoga Faring, so that is really, that is meant to be a free community event so everyone can participate. So the city's general fund invests revenues into that event and staff also solicits donations from the community. So usually what we, the cost that we would have is listed here in terms, that would be the general fund investment. And again, depending on what is the extent of the activities that we would be offering, then we would seek additional donations from the community to leverage those dollars.
That's what I was going to ask about, is opportunity for people to donate or to help pitch it.
Right, because it is, we do want to continue to have that be a free event so everyone can participate.
Oh, absolutely. So that other question did come back. So when you were mentioning about coming back to council with adjustments to the budget, how often do you anticipate that, you know, you would be looking at that? Are you going to be looking at it every quarter or every month or?
Well, that's really hard to know. So, you know, I would say that we would certainly have the opportunity because right now we have additional appropriation ordinances that come before city council on a regular basis.
Yes.
So we would tap into that.
Into that set time. I just wanted to kind of make sure, are we just going to kind of like, oh, that, we need that and then, you know, slap it on a.
We're just going to, we're just tracking participation, revenues, and when it seems like it's time to submit additional appropriation, we will do that.
Okay, great, thanks.
And to answer part of your question, so when we said we're seeing decrease in activity in indoor events, we know clearly we're seeing increased activity in outdoor events because right now the golf fund is doing really well. We thought it was actually a product of just what was happening during COVID, but what we're now learning is a lot of people took up golf during COVID and so they're continuing to play. So, you know, we're seeing differences in different operations in terms of what are people doing and what are they comfortable doing, which is really the driver of when we're going to bring things back. And we need to make sure that we're going to be able to sustain it.
Yes.
So we will watch the numbers, but it needs to show that there's sustained growth in participation.
Yeah, so yeah, that's kind of what I was, you know, when you were bringing things back, you know, I kind of wanted to make sure that, and I'm sure you are, but, you know, thinking about that sustainability, is it just something that was just a spike in that particular timeframe or is this something that we really want to invest in appropriate dollars for in the long term?
Right.
So, thanks.
And I think to add on to Harold's comment is that in the golf fund in 2020 is that our revenues increased by $500,000 over the previous year and this year so far we are up 300,000 over 2020. So that's, so golf and recreation, it's a bright spot and a pain point. So, but the staff is really working very hard to try to bring back those recreation activities.
Thank you.
All right, nobody else, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley, members of council, my name is Alberto Mendoza and I am Project Coordinator for Community Services and I'll be talking about our increased set aside for Human Services Agency contracts. I think it was in 2019 that there was a general push from the council to increase the set aside to 3% and this year we have finally arrived and we're grateful for that. This funding, as you can see, will address increased demands for safety net services and still continues to support community efforts to address homelessness and other challenging social issues. Just so you know, this is a 56% increase from 2021. We are setting aside at this point 60% of this funding for Human Services Agency contracts and 40% for our homelessness efforts and our home stability efforts as well. Love to answer any questions?
Nope, good.
So next we have Kathy Fedler that will talk about the Affordable Housing Fund.
I am the person who cannot do the slide deck every time. Kathy Fedler, Housing and Community Investment Division Manager. So this year, as Teresa noted, we are moving the Inclusionary Housing Program Specialist from a term limited position funded in the Incremental Development Fund into the Affordable Housing Fund as a full-time position. And so what we are looking at each year is our total ongoing administrative costs to manage all of our affordable housing programs, CDVG program, the home program, the Affordable Housing Fund, the incentives, the inclusionary housing, et cetera, which puts us at about 480 some thousand dollars, generally speaking, from year to year. Once we subtract out our CDVG administration, which we're capped at how much we can use of that grant program to offset administrative expenses, and then also the administrative transfer that you guys already transferred from the general fund into the Affordable Housing Fund, we're anticipating a gap of somewhere between 140,000 and 160,000. If you remember last, I think it was 2019 and 2020, we came and received permission to use 10%, up to 10% of the million dollars that you transfer to offset some of those additional administrative expenses. So that is, was still an option that we looked at. And then we also looked at a second option of allowing us to use up to 10% of all the Affordable Housing Fund revenues to help cover that gap. And that would include part of the marijuana tax, the part of the million dollars, the program income or the loan repayments that come in, and then the fee in lieu. So eventually, hopefully, that will grow enough that it'll be much less than 10% that we actually use for administrative expenses again to cover all those programs. I think that is the basic, I think our recommendation was for option two is what we are looking at for that, so I will be happy to answer any questions.
Don't see any.
Whoops, I went the wrong way again. Okay, so next Nancy Kerr, our library director, will talk about the, give us an update on the library.
I will. As Karen said, I'm Nancy Kerr, I'm your library director. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We are underway in the second phase of the library feasibility study. We had a kind of a pause for a while, COVID related mostly, but Phase Two is underway. Phase One did speak to some of the things that our board president, Mark Springfield, just spoke to with some deficiencies in overall funding that are impacting services, that the building is too small for a community of this size, and that funding and resources are below average when compared to pure communities. So what Phase Two is doing is including detailed financial modeling, addressing what it would take to provide Longmont residents and cardholders with a modern 21st century library and different models to produce the funding needed to do so. So that's a pretty complex task. It involves developing level of service standards for things like FTE staffing, professional staffing, what he means by that are master's degree librarians, parking, holdings per capita, digital holdings per capita, dedicated spaces for public use and study, availability of new technologies and tech instruction. So these are some of the things that our consultant is studying now and we are making headway on that and should have that phase completed with a report available in the next few months. So that is where we are in the feasibility study. And perhaps one of our important, our most important requests this year is for a Librarian One bilingual outreach coordinator. We are making a concerted effort to add bilingual staff all the time when we have openings. We have a great need to perform more outreach to the Spanish-speaking population. We still have a lot of folks that don't necessarily know what we do and what we have available. So this position does not only provide outreach to the Spanish-speaking community, but will coordinate the bulk of the library's outreach from children's outreach to adult outreach. So we do have staff who normally, at this point, do go out in the community, but we need a more organized effort to make sure that we are reaching everyone who we can possibly reach with this effort. So we are very excited about this new position. Whoops, and I've gone backwards.
You went the right way.
We had four slides, so, and I'm coming up with two. Here we go. All right. This is a restoration of Prospector Loan Service. What Prospector Loan Service is, is the service that allows you with your library card to borrow materials very quickly and free of charge from libraries across, all across Colorado, Wyoming, and a couple other little neighboring spots in neighboring states. So we tried to do without it this year. They were probably our one service vendor that did not offer any kind of a COVID discount going forward. We decided as a consortium to try and do without it this year. It did not affect some of the other libraries in our consortium as much as it did Longmont. Our patrons borrow a lot of materials from other libraries and we actually send a lot more materials, about 130,000 items to folks in other libraries every year. So Prospector was not something. So Prospector was not something that was not missed by our patrons, so we would like to restore it for next year. In lieu of Prospector, we have increased true interlibrary loan, which means we can borrow materials from anywhere, from libraries across the country, but involves a lot of conversations, a lot of mailing, physical mailing, snail mailing of items. And we found that it took three staff members to do that, um, at least part of their time. So we feel that's more cost-effective and a lot better for our patrons to go back to the Prospector Loan Service. And this is a new item for us. This is something that I noticed when I came in here three years ago as the director, that this is probably the only library where I've ever worked where we were still doing everything by hand. You know, every sticker, every label, every RFID tag, every plastic cover on a book. And processing by our vendors is just more effective and a lot cheaper. So we find ourselves in a position of having, um, usually not enough staff to get things on, on, back on the shelf in a timely manner and to pluck all those holds for folks in a timely manner also. And some of the same folks that are doing these tasks will be able to be repurposed to do other tasks in the library. So this is an important thing for us and we hope it gets our new materials into people's hands more quickly. Happy to answer any questions.
I know there's, I know the council had some other questions about libraries, so.
Counselor perfect.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Thanks for that update. I have noticed that, well, first of all, can you tell me the total amount that all of these four things will, is it in the budget? I didn't see it in the budget, but I didn't look very hard.
I don't have that at hand, I'll have to get that for you because it doesn't, we don't have, um.
The position.
The position.
What's the position, Teresa?
Um, Jim let me know that the library budget is growing by 160,000 this year, so.
What I want to know is, is that enough money for you until, because I know that this feasibility study is going to come back and it's not going to be a fast process,
No.
depending upon how we go about it and what the public wants, et cetera, et cetera. So my, my concern is that we are not funding you to the extent you need to be funded. What I want to know is 160,000 enough for you to get through whatever, this year?
I think it is for this year.
Okay.
I think that this year we're still, we're not, you know, I don't think that we've had as much impact as recreation has, but we still are serving fewer people than we would normally do. So I think that for this year, um, I think that I request for reasonable. I think that, you know, next year, hopefully with, with COVID, hopefully COVID will be on the way and it'll be a different story.
Okay.
And there are, there are some things that we definitely want to not get out ahead of our feasibility study and really look at, um, the areas where we think increased spending would make, would have the highest impact.
Okay. My other question, probably for Jim, is what happens with the overdue fines? Do those stay with the library?
So the, the fines are part of the general fund overall revenue and obviously all the library funding is coming from the general fund, so.
Okay.
But you might talk about that.
They do not. It is definitely a trend in libraries, which you may have seen, to reduce or eliminate fines on materials. This does not mean that libraries do not charge for materials that are just never returned or damaged, but, um, fines have definitely been proven over the years to be detrimental to, to some folks' ability to, we feel comfortable checking, checking out materials. And unfortunately, they have the strongest effects on low-income families with children. So that is a direction we'd like to go in. I will say that our fine income has gone down quite a bit over the past few years because we've instituted some policies, for example, with automatic renewals, et cetera, so that folks, you know, if your book comes to you, if no one has a hold on it, it's automatically renewed for you.
Correct.
So, um, we try really hard not to be punitive with our fines.
Okay.
So, and, and we always make, you know, we make a lot of exceptions as well, so.
And I think what Nancy's touching in is really our equity conversation and how we look at things.
Yes.
And, and so that is something we need to figure out.
Okay. But Nancy, I, I want to encourage you that if you need funding for something, please come and ask because we don't know unless you ask. So thank you for this update.
You're welcome.
Uh, Dr. Waters.
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. So my, my question isn't so much about what you've shared, Nancy, it's about what's in our materials tonight, specifically relative to a sorter and the use of the Mosher Fund to pay for a sorter. I've had this conversation with Harold at length and I want to, I just want to say again, uh, in the, when we were asked in the spring, I think in May, uh, I think Jim asked, maybe when we got our first overall budget presentation, if we had, you know, one-time expenditure recommendations. This one was at the top of the list, well, along with the, the child care and all childhood, uh, as a priority, uh, but in terms of library, uh, needs. And, um, I, I was hoping to see when we saw the budget that, that we would finally actually be purchasing a sorter. I was surprised to see that it would be coming out of the Mosher Fund. I, I can tell you as the liaison to the library board, uh, the library board's been for several months working on a, a very thoughtful approach to a policy to kind of govern them with respect to the Mosher Fund and the IMSD Fund, right? So they spend that in a way that reflects, um, best and highest use of those resources. So I can tell it was a surprise to them and it was a surprise to me to see the Mosher Fund used to fund something that in my view should be operational in a library. There aren't many modern libraries, do you confirm this or not, Nancy? Very many modern libraries today operating without the kind of sorter that, that, now we're not talking about being purchased out of the Mosher Fund. I don't want to put you on the spot, but this is something that's been recorded, been requested or proposed a number of times, right? So, um, so let me just hold that for a minute. I want to say, I don't, you know, I don't know what, what, what the expectations are for staff, for the organization, or for the council when we see the results of the feasibility study and whether or not we want to, what, we want to signal the community that we care enough about the library to begin to make up ground that's been lost over time. If we want to do that, this is exactly the wrong way to do it. We send exactly the opposite message, that we're going to take Mosher Funds that should be used to supplement the budget and supplant what should be an operational expense that's core to the, to the library's function. I, I just, I don't understand it, especially if we were, you know, I would have, it would have been fun to have some conversation about this before I saw it in these materials since it was a recommendation in response to the, to the invitation to identify one-time priorities. There was, there was another one in terms of shelving that I don't know, maybe it's in the, in the budget, I just can't find it, but that was one of the other one-time expenditures. But my biggest concern really is, um, and, and Mark didn't, didn't speak to this one explicitly like he did some of more generally, some of the other, other needs, but I can tell you, uh, it's been as recently as last night, a conversation about what's the, the policy? And it's for them to govern themselves and it would have been nice even to have asked them, right? As opposed to surprise them, uh, with the use of that fund for that purpose. So I, I'm going to, I'm getting, I'm weighing in right now. My recommendation, I don't know if we, how to do this, whether you want a council motion or a motion to the council, or you just want to talk about among yourselves. I think it's a mistake to do it this way. I think we send the wrong signal to the community. I think we're resourced to purchase the sorter. Understand the RFP's out, we don't really know exactly how much it's going to cost. Whatever that's going to cost, it, it seems to me that we need to make certain we get that done out of either the capital improvement budget or, and I assume it's a capital expenditure, whatever's going to be probably more than to the 250,000 dollars.
Yeah, if, if council wanted to do that, we would do it out of one-time funds and, to answer the question, a, as we look at this and we have the budget request, this wasn't in the budget request and, and.
It was in my budget request.
Correct, and I remembered the conversation and so, uh, we were looking at, well, the sorter we were going to, the sorter was going to be.
Don't ask me if you don't want an answer.
Well, no, but we said the sorter was going to be purchased. Now we go, obviously there's a different conversation coming in. As, as Jim and I have talked about it, if, if this is a direction that council wants to go, I think we can figure it out within, within the budget, but I would.
So you're asking for a motion. I'm, then I move that, is this the time to do it? I mean, I don't want to, I can, we can wait till the end of the budget.
This is good.
Then I'm, then I'm going to move to council that we direct staff, uh, to switch from the Mosher Fund to the, to the capital improvement, to the general fund.
General fund one time.
To purchase the sorter that we would otherwise have purchased with funds donated to do supplemental, not supplanting work for the library.
All right, it's been moved and seconded by Dr. Waters and, or sorry, moved by Dr. Waters, seconded by Councilmember Christensen. Does anybody want to speak against the motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, sorry, there's some more questions here before you continue. Councilmember Christensen.
This is not a question so much as, uh, simply that I'm, I'm very glad that Councilman Waters made that thing. The, the fact is that it really is, we have fallen further and further and further behind in funding the library. When we are actually giving it adjusted for inflation 17% less now than we were 10 years ago, that's shameful, it's disgraceful, you know? How can we possibly ever catch up unless we start doing it now? We, there has been talk about establishing a special district for that, but that, we wouldn't need a special district if we would just fund them now at an appropriate rate. The fact that they are funded so heavily by the Friends of the Library, a voluntary and private fund, uh, and the Mosher Fund, all of these, this is wonderful, but as Councilman Waters said, these are supposed to supplement the basic funding when we, year after year, neglect to fund them. This is, you know, a library, and in terms of equity, when I was a little kid, we didn't have much, but I could go to the library and it was, that was my world. And it is for many kids, it's a place where they're happy, they're safe, they have the world at their fingertips, literally, and they can, um, it's a wonderful place. And if we're going to keep this up, the, the role of the library has so changed, but you know, in many ways, it has not changed very much in America because it is always underfunded. When I was 16 years old, we went to visit my relatives in Denmark. I know you're tired of hearing about this, but, um, we went to a library. This was a town of about 30,000 people. They were so proud of their library. They had a theater about the size of the Stewart Auditorium. They had a large cafe that served lunches and breakfast and coffee in the afternoon and pastries. They had a huge library, they had a music room for listening to music, such as they have at, uh, CESU, I think. They had meeting rooms, they had dance performances, it was a cultural center. And that is what a library is. It is a cultural center where we base our knowledge and it's available free for anyone in this town who wants to educate themselves or avail themselves of culture and meeting and public community, uh, public, public gatherings. It's invaluable and yet every year we kind of say, eh, 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 and we give lots of money to plenty of other organizations. So. So I would like us to actually consider donating, you know, somehow either donating it, uh, from our council contingency fund, a substantial amount, or, um, somehow adjusting the budget so that we can actually fund the library at an appropriate amount of money.
So, Mayor, I think, I think I probably need to, to, to address some points here. So I think one of the issues in this, um, when you, when you look at the revenue growth that we've had year over year, we've had really narrow budgets. And during that time with the narrow budgets, we've also had other directives in terms of things that we needed to do. Specifically, um, and many of you all weren't on the council then, but it was creating an affordable housing fund of a million dollars, ongoing revenue. And so that was something that the council set as a priority for us, so we, we were very focused on setting the million dollars there. Similar to what we've done tonight in terms of the health and human service funding where we pushed it to 3%, which was another half a million dollars in ongoing revenue because we're talking about ongoing revenue versus one-time revenues. And then we have to talk about the growth and the demands that we're seeing in other places. I wanted to let you all know, we have, we're focused on this, but when, when '08 hit, and I'm going to kind of take you back to some earlier budgets, again, prior to many of you all being here, um, there was a decision made in those budgets to, uh, fund ongoing expenses with one-time dollars. And so at that point, if you remember, we called it the budget gap. And we estimated that the budget gap was somewhere in the neighborhood of what, Jim? Three and a half million dollars? The reality was that budget gap was larger than that and I think it came out to be closer to five million dollars, is that correct? Four, or was it four and a half? Four? Anyway, so it was larger than the estimated three and a half. So in those budget years following that, we had to then take ongoing revenues to supplant those operations that were funded with one-time dollars. Typically, when you get into a financial crisis like that, you make cuts, um, and then you baseline it so then you can look at your revenue streams and you can allocate it as needed. We did, that didn't occur. So then we had to then shift ongoing revenues to make sure that those ongoing expenses weren't funded with one-time dollars. So there was a pretty big gap, so if you take the three and a half to four million there, the million into affordable housing, the increases we're doing, that, that's about five million dollars that we've had to put into other ongoing expenses and deal with many of the other challenges that we had in terms of flood recovery and these other issues that we've been bringing in. So I wanted to be kind of clear on this to say, we've been focused on it, but we've had many pressures within the budget that we've had to deal with.
Counselor, hit your, no, you hit your microphone so you can, people can hear, that's fine, I'll call on you, it's okay. You sure? Okay, all right. Nobody else is in the queue?
Mayor, next we have Carmen Ramirez, uh, our Community Neighborhood Resources Manager to talk about the, um, the, the next two budget, proposed budget items.
Good evening, mayor and council. Carmen Ramirez, manager, Community and Neighborhood Resources. I've got three quick slides for you here. First is the Social Equity Coordinator. Uh, and this role is going to be essential to really establishing and sustaining a social equity focus throughout the organization. As you can see, the position's going to really lead the efforts to advance city equity initiatives and then make our goals, um, visible to ensure equity across, equitable access to resources and services for all. So that's the Social Equity Coordinator. Whoops, sorry. And then the next one is the Neighborhood Resource Coordinator. This one is really going to be focused on the, not only the equity initiative, but it's really crucial to helping us initiate and sustain relationships and connections with neighborhoods, make sure that they have multiple access regarding barriers and health changes, uh, health challenges. It's a key role in collaborating with neighbors to better understand not only their needs, their assets, and work to build resiliency and sustainability throughout the community. I'll add to that, that it's very crucial that our neighborhoods are connected to the city and all the different resources and that we're in communication, as you've seen with COVID, that's been key. The last one that I have here is, oops, sorry, keep going the wrong way, is equity training. We want to make sure that internally we are providing training. So, um, the organizational equity training is 20,000. We want to make sure that our equity team is also trained to sustain some of these challenging conversations when it comes to equity. So we want to make sure that we have a committed, consistent equity training component for all staff. And then again, as I said, for the equity team, that they can facilitate equity conversations, that they're able to problem solve, and they're able to build, uh, strategic plans with departments. And I think that is.
So I want to jump in with Carmen here. These were two positions that, to talk. So I want to jump in with Carmen here. These were two positions that, to talk a little bit about what was happening operationally. So what we were seeing generally is the Neighborhood Services Group was, was acting both as the internal and external equity component within our organization. And so what we were seeing is the number of calls that were coming in, whether they be issues externally with the community, neighbor-to-neighbor relations, or external with the community to the city, or even internal, that volume was going up significantly. At the same time, the, the work on the Neighborhood Service side is like this right now, in terms of what we're seeing in different neighborhoods, and what we're seeing at parks and things like that. And so what we, we fundamentally had in, in this area was, was a department of three, or four.
Four with me.
Four, four with Carmen, with, with a tremendous amount of work that was much beyond that, and, and work that was needed, and really facilitating groups like the Neighborhood Impact Team, or how we're working with, with different neighborhoods. And then what we learned in COVID, actually, and this is where we're going to bring some options to you all in terms of the ARPA funds, is, is we really saw the impact of, we saw it in the flood, but we also saw it here, in, in terms of neighborhood resiliency and sustainability, and really needing to dig in and, and spend time within neighborhoods in our community so they could be more resilient and sustainable, and ongoing. And, and so this was just, if there was an area where we were strained, and, and honestly, to the breaking point, it, it was here in terms of what we were seeing. And so that's why we were making the recommendation on these two positions.
Thank you.
Is there any que, I see lives.
Yeah, there are, hold on, just seeing who's next. Oh, she's not next, but you are next. Councilmember Idago Ferring, you're last on the list, but you haven't spoken, so you can go.
Okay, I'll take it. So, you know, I, I wanted to go back and look at the one-time fund for the equity training. So it's the twenty-five thousand. Is that to hire outside facilitators?
It would be, one of the things that we're going to do is an inventory of in-house skills, but primarily, especially the first year, would be looking at outside facilitators or trainers to come in. But we're also going to look at in-house skill sets that we have.
Okay, and then, you know, one thing that I'm, I'm noticing in just in several organizations that are incorporating equity training for their staff, or for members, or, you know, for their, you know, different organizations, is that it's sort of kind of viewing it as a checklist. It's like a one-and-done deal. And, you know, I really want to make sure that, you know, as we delve into equity training and looking at meeting the needs of our diverse population, that it's not just, you know, checking a box, that, that, that it's going to be ongoing. I know I saw that one time, and it was, so, you know, I'd, I'd like to see that this work is, is continuous.
I think this one, is this one ongoing, guys?
This is ongoing.
This is ongoing. I think we may have some one-time as well, or we did have one-time.
So I saw the twenty-five thousand in one-time funds for equity training for city staff.
It is one-time? Okay. Part of what we've done too, is we want to understand what we're going to actually need, and then we can figure out how we can do it in the, in the ongoing budget. I, this year, I, I used some of my contingency for some of the work that we did in order to get it started. And I think we're, we're also learning too. And, and so this is at the forefront of our mind. The council may remember that when Carmen gave a presentation of what we've done historically, and you could see it start and stop, start and stop. This really is about generally both, in both of these positions is a, a consistent, ongoing effort.
Yes.
So, so that we don't have that start and stop in this.
Yes. And then, you know, because, because ideally, you know, we want to have equity so ingrained in how we operate, that it's, it's second nature to, to everything, you know, just like filling out your time card, and it just be, it just becomes part of your, the culture and norms. So, and I, yeah, yeah, I definitely think it's going to be more than a year or a short, short term.
Yep.
To change. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Martin.
Ah, can't do that. It's a habit, I'm sorry. On the topic I've been harping on, I want to make sure that one of those full-time equivalents is, is going to have as part of his or her role, the idea of connecting residents to city and county services, because man, it's, it's a scavenger hunt right now, and I hope that, I mean, fixing the website is one thing, but it's not everything.
Yeah, it, it, to that point, when we did the, we, we kind of took a stab at it earlier. Unfortunately, it rained that day with an event at Lanyon Park.
Yeah.
It really is about bringing services, but part of why you want the coordinator position is, this isn't just about this department. So my vision for this is that it is truly a coordinator position that brings the entire organization together, so that when we work with neighborhoods, we literally, we've already talked about a few, where we'll go in and do a block party and bring everyone that's connected. First, first actually is to get to know each other and build relationships. And second, and part of that then is to talk about what we do. And that's really part of this, that in terms of the conversations, because we need that.
As long as there is a vision for it, I'm very happy.
Okay, that's it for the queue.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Bagley and members of council, Lisa Knoblock, Sustainability Program Manager with Public Works and Natural Resources. Can you all hear me? Okay. All right, I'm going to be reviewing the proposed 2022 budget for sustainability, but before I get into those numbers, I just wanted to provide some highlights for some of the work that's underway in 2021, mostly because I just want to show, I'm not going to get into the details of all of the things listed here, but I wanted to show just the breadth of work that's happening across these areas, across the organization. There's a lot of exciting things going on, and I just want to touch on one of those items in particular with regards to electric vehicles, because there's a lot of movement happening in that area. No, no pun intended, or maybe. And I also want to let you know that in your, in your packets, you do have the mid-year report as part of your info item, so it goes into more detail on these items, as well as a few other things. But with regards to electric vehicles, as you all recall, back in the spring, we completed the Equitable Carbon-Free Transportation Roadmap, which is a mouthful. It's a project that was funded from 2020 Boulder County Sustainability Funds, and really created a coordinated and streamlined plan for how we can achieve our emissions reduction goals in the transportation sector, and do so in a way that benefits everyone across our community. That actually laid the foundation for an opportunity that we were approached with a couple of months later, to apply for a Department of Energy grant for almost twelve million dollars to accelerate the strategies in the roadmap to electrify the transportation sector. So that was a pretty exciting opportunity. We should be hearing in the next couple of weeks the status of that grant. And I really want to give a huge shout out to Tim Ellis with LPC, and Attra Nusa with Sustainability, and who's our grant coordinator as well. They really pulled a big group of folks from across the organization, as well as coordinated with some external partners, to pull that off in a pretty quick timeframe. And even if we don't receive those grant funds, it really gave us the opportunity to pull a solid team together to move forward with implementation of those strategies, albeit on probably a slower timeframe than if we had those additional funds. I also wanted to just highlight some of the work that our fleet folks are doing. They've been deferring as many vehicles as possible, waiting for alternative fuel or electric vehicles to be available. They're also really looking at their sixteen-year replacement policy with an eye toward electric and alternative fuel vehicles, and the infrastructure that's going to be needed to really facilitate that transition, and starting to set targets for our fleet transition as well. So they're doing some great work in that area. We have a couple of regional collaborations underway. We're working with some of the other Boulder County communities, and Excel's Partners and Energy Program, to develop a regional EV plan, which will be really critical to building out this capacity across our, across the Front Range region. And then also working with CU, City of Boulder, and the school districts on some bus fleet electrification opportunities. And then lastly, I just want to highlight the Go EV Resolution, that'll be coming to you next week on the Consent Agenda. That was one of the strategies identified in the transportation roadmap, that really outlines Longmont's commitment to electrification in the transportation sector, and designates Longmont as a Go EV city. So lots of cool stuff happening in that area. And now I'll jump into the 2022 Sustainability, Proposed Sustainability Budget. The total funding within the Sustainability Fund is just over a million dollars, and you'll see in the graph of the various enterprise funds that contribute to that, as well as the general fund and the projected revenue for, with the Boulder County Sustainability Tax Funds. There we go. The breakdown of that total includes funding to support climate action strategies identified in the Climate Action Recommendations Report, neighborhood programs such as the Seoul Program and the Sustainable Neighborhood Solutions Program, and our partnership with Carmen's team and Community and Neighborhood Resources, the Sustainable Business Program, education and engagement, some one-time funds for the Zero Waste Efforts, which we've been discussing with you all recently, and general sustainability, which is kind of the, the catch-all bucket for things that don't fall into those other categories, the Sustainability Tax Funds that we expect to come through in 2022, and then the portion for staffing, which includes some increases in existing staffing positions, which I will talk about next. So the proposed 2022 budget has increases to three existing positions, the first of which is the Water Conservation and Sustainability Specialist. That's currently one FTD, FTE that's focused on both of those areas. The proposed budget includes splitting that into two full-time positions, one which would be a Water Conservation Specialist, which would be housed in, in water resources, and the other would be a full-time Sustainability Specialist, housed in sustainability, that would create greater capacity for us to focus on climate action priorities, particularly around data analysis and things like greenhouse gas modeling, tracking and reporting, as well as creating greater capacity to support and collaborate across our organization through things like impl- implementation of the internal sustainability evaluation system. The Neighborhood Resource Specialist, which is housing Carmen's team, we currently have half an FTE that's dedicated to sustainability, that we're proposing to increase to one FTE. That'll help increase our resources and capacity on neighborhood-based sustainability efforts, and really ensure broad and equitable community engagement on all of the work that we're doing here. And then lastly, the Sustainability Grant and Program Coordinator Position, which is also currently one FTE that's, that's split into both of these areas. This is also currently a fixed-term position set to end at the end of this year, and the proposed budget includes that as two full-time permanent positions, a grant coordinator position that would be housed in business services, and a full-time Sustainability Program Coordinator, that would really help focus on climate action priorities, such as the development and implementation of the Climate Action Fund, which supports low-income businesses and residents with climate action work, as well as promoting and evaluating all of our sustainability-related programs and resources, to make sure that those programs really benefit and are accessible to all members of our community. With regards to the Sustainability Tax, you'll see that the box on the top is the 2021 tax amount that was funded and the projects that we have supported through those funds. So part of that is the Grant and Program Coordinator, which I just mentioned, which is a fixed-term position ending at the end of this year, the Equity and Engagement Specialist, which is a fixed-term position that started this year and will continue into 2022, and the Climate Risk and Vulnerability Mapping Project. We had a match of about twenty-seven thousand dollars, not about twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven thousand five hundred three dollars, with that total of just under a hundred and forty thousand. You can see in 2022, the estimated revenue from the Sustainability Tax is a bit of a bump. Obviously, 2021 took a hit with COVID, so we have, we'll have a total of about a hundred and sixty thousand there. We will continue to use funds to support the second year of the Equity and Engagement Specialist. And then the additional items there are not set in stone as yet. We've been in conversations with staff in the Sustainability Advisory Board, and have identified these as the, the priority projects, but we're still waiting on some additional information to determine which of those will move forward and at what amount. But continuation of the Climate Risk and Vulnerability Mapping Project, that could be additional data to collect if that's determined to be needed, or moving into adaptation planning, contributions to the PACE Equity Program, which is a county program that supports underserved businesses in the implementation of sustainability practices, or support for the Sustainability Plan Update, with an estimated city match of about thirty thousand dollars. And then lastly, I just want to highlight some of the funding requests in, in a number of other areas that also support sustainability and climate action goals. I'm not going to go through all these things here, but you'll see that there is a number of things in these areas that total just over ten million dollars, supporting investments in transportation, energy, air quality, waste diversion, water conservation, and community with the CARES Program, which I'm going to hand off to Becky in just a second. Sorry. She's, she's going to chat more about you, with, with you about that briefly. But before, before I hand it over to her, I really just want to acknowledge the work of the staff across the organization that work all, in all of these areas and other areas that support sustainability and climate action, and not only help us meet our goals in those areas, but help to create, or help to make Longmont a more healthy, resilient and equitable place. And I want to thank council for your continued leadership and support in this area. So I'm going to hand it to Becky, and then I'll jump back in if you all have any questions.
Oh, we do have questions. We'll go with, hold on, there's, they've been in the queue for a while, but you want to go, Councilmember Peck? You were next.
Yes, I was just wondering if Becky...
No, no, what?
She's going to talk about the CARES Program real quick.
The thing is, this is, this is, this has been in for, for a while.
Oh.
Councilmember Peck, yeah, Councilmember Peck.
Yes. Thank you. Lisa, I'm really happy to see that the Water Conservation Specialist is part of this program, and I was disappointed to see that water was not really addressed very well in the Climate Action Task Force. And I would like this to be an absolute priority, and to have, out of this specialist, to have definitive steps that we take as a city, as residents, as a school district, on what we do with our water as we see reservoirs and lakes drying up all over. I mean, Longmont is in a perfect position, we're good, but we may not be good for a while. So we need to do visionary steps. So that's what I would expect back, that we have actually an action plan that is, that's undoable, and the sooner the better. The other thing that I haven't seen in any of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, if it's wrapped up into another program, is anything about renewable energy other than modernizing the electrical grid, et cetera, but for Longmont taking specific steps through grants that maybe come down out of the Build Back Better, for maybe neighborhood, for low-income socioeconomic equity, low-income solar farms, so that we can provide different ways to get our energy. And, and the only reason I'm saying that is, look what Hurricane Ida did, miles and miles apart from where it hit. It wiped out electricity for thirty or forty hours. We need to look beyond that and prepare. So somewhere in this, I would like to see some kind of a research or education on what's available in grants, maybe work with David Hornbacher and get PRPA to, well, I'll just say get PRPA to move a little faster, so that we also have a vision for those steps. Rather than just lip service, we need to actually hit it hard. Thanks.
Is, I don't think Ken, Ken Houston isn't here, so I do want to jump in really quick. Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Peck, with regards to the Water Conservation Position. If you all are familiar with the Water Efficiency Master Plan, and, and I'm not, not going to be able to do this justice as Ken would, but that, the update to that plan is coming up in, I think we have to have it in, in 2024. And so part of, part of the reason for requesting the full-time position in 2022 is so they can get that process underway starting in 2022, with an eye toward that Climate Action Task Force target, that I know we talked about kind of putting on hold until we go through the Water Efficiency Master Plan, Master Plan process, so that we can really have that visionary but actionable step to get us to increase water conservation pretty dramatic, dramatically, and understand what's possible and all of the cost and impacts and such associated with that for Longmont. So that's that piece, and I'd be happy to follow up with, with Ken and with Francie if you all want. if you all want additional information for that, but I definitely will bring that information back to them. And then with regards to the Renewable Energy piece, Dave Hornbacher is going to be up next, so, so I'll put him on the spot to answer that. But I will say that he and I are both working on the ARPA team with regards to the recovery funds, on talking with folks about how we can integrate different sustainability practices into the different focus areas within those recovery funds as well.
And we do, we are out for a fairly large deal, Department of Energy grant, to deal with some of this, and then obviously with the infrastructure legislation, that, that is something that we're going to be focused on in terms of the renewable component.
All right. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. This may also be a question for David, but you know, I like the idea that we're going to sign up on the Go EV Resolution and all of that, but I had a question from a resident today about EV support from the city, and really all I had to tell him was you can have a Level 2 charger for a dollar, you know? And I was looking on Efficiency Works, and you can't buy a juice box Level 2 charger for your house at a discount there anymore, apparently. And there used to be a group by arrangement that you could buy certain, you know, down-level EVs, and that may have been only for Fort Collins people. I've, I've never quite been sure how that works, but that's not there either. So can you give us an update about what PRPA is doing for the service area with regard to encouraging the transition to electric vehicles?
Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Martin, that, that might be a better question for, for Dave, again, not to put him on the spot, but I, I don't have specifics. I don't have specifics on that, otherwise I'd be happy to follow up with Tim Ellis. He's going to be the one that's going to know more about what PRPA is and the city's focus is in terms of supporting private EV ownership.
Thank you. I'll ask it when he's up again.
Any other questions?
All right. That's it for the queue.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and Members of Council, and Becky Doyle with PWNR. There was a brief mention in the packet today that we included a budget request to fund a rebate of the Waste Management Fee as part of the Longmont CARES Program. That's one step that we need to take in order to include that in the program. So if you would like to provide direction to add that to the program as part of our upcoming ordinance that includes the direction from last month to also include funding for a partial rebate of the storm drainage fee, that, that would be helpful.
Thank you. I move that we include the storm drainage fee rebate in the CARES Program.
Waste Management.
Oh. You don't want to do the storm drainage?
We're doing that already.
The Waste, the Waste Management Fee in the CARES Program.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Peck, was seconded by Councilmember Christensen. Any debate on the issue? Okay. Seeing no debate, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Becky. Councilmember Christensen, you're in the queue. If it wasn't for that, are you wanting to say something else?
No.
Well, we'll come back to you. It's okay. All right.
Mayor, you, you, Mayor, you have quite a few more slides if you wanted to take a break, or we can keep going.
You guys want to take a break or keep going? All right, let's take a five-minute break. That's fine.
All right, if council can hear me, let's try to head back.
It's all right. You tried to give me a PhD, please?
No, no, I've got, I'm, I'm. All right, let's get going again.
All right, good evening, Mayor Begley and members of City Council. I'm David Hornbacher. I'm the Executive Director for Longmont Power and Communications, and I've just got a short overview for you associated with renewable energy, actually four slides total, and so I will get into it. And so actually, the first slide is this overview, second will be on budget and three main capital items, the third will be on strategies and tools in progress, and the fourth slide is really about the resources to accomplish these goals. You've seen this slide before. What we've done is tried to sort of create a simple graphic that we could use as we talk about our programs. And we grouped these tools into basically seven categories, and they all sort of fit together to, you know, help us work towards the 100% renewable energy goal, and these are really our integrated electric resources. And so in addition to, you'll see sort of towards the top, Platte River, you know, Power Authority Renewable Energy. Well, in addition to them transitioning to a renewable energy resource, there are really actions that we can take at home. And especially as a municipal electric provider and getting counsel from, giving counsel direction. And that's what we will use to create, store, manage energy, and most importantly, to ultimately synchronize that to our renewable energy resources. And so really, my goal is that, is that really, we're able to ultimately control about 10% of our load. That it's either being created, or it's enabled, or that it might be reduced during times of peak or times of lack of other energy. So why don't we move to the next slide then? Oops, I guess I will. So with that, the 2022 budget for LPC, there's really three capital programs that start to work together in tandem to maintain and improve the system, to modernize it, and to make this transition of a system that can manage these renewable energy resources. So electric systems really have been designed throughout the past century, really to move electricity in one direction. Really from a source, source typically far away, sort of to your point, Councilmember Peck, you know, somewhere else, and then if it gets disrupted, there's a problem. And so that whole system is taking from that sources. It comes to town and then distributing out through a sort of a spider web to the meter. It's all designed, fused, you know, operates in that way, and that has to change. And that has to change quite a bit for us to really enable local resources to that goal. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh. Aye. Okay, sorry about that. Yep. And so, like I said, these, these systems were designed for a single direction, really from somewhere out down to the final meter and user. And what we need to do is really create a more dynamic and a bidirectional type system that can infuse energy at many different locations throughout the system. And so really, what we're doing here is we're every day building that utility system of the future. And the future, frankly, is not very far off, so that's something we're diligently doing, and some of those questions I'll even be able to get into tonight. And so when you look at these three items, you could think of 044, 645,000. A lot of that is the equipment and technology to create that reliability. So that's part of that transitioning from the old-fashioned grid to what we need in the future. 102, the second one at 431,000, is really two partial, two main components. One is the proactive replacement. So as things fail, cables fail, transformers fail, we replace them. What's different, though, in the utility of the future is looking carefully at what size should that be? Could it be? Are there other alternatives? Is it a different-sized cable, a different route? Is there distributed energy resources we might put in those areas to really create a stronger backbone than we currently have? And then there's also the reactive replacement. Somebody, you know, transformer fails, somebody drives over a streetlight pole, things of that nature. So you react and replace and refresh. And then really, the last one at 450,000, the EL 103, that one is the Distributing Energy Resource Innovation and Solutions. And it's really, it's the part that we're really creating, integrating, and managing. And so these three funds actually account for a little over 1.5 million of the LPC budget, and we will use them in tandem to really work on that utility of the future, as well as ensuring our reliability for this community. Let's do an overview of some of the strategies and tools that are in progress. And by what I mean is in progress is that we actually have staff working on most of these, or we're going to launch staff to be working on some of these. So first off, and you're going to see more about this here shortly, actually, is a thermostat program. And so the idea with that is that we've got a lot of intelligent thermostats already on the system and working through a third-party vendor, wherein in working with our customers, there might be some controls that can be enabled. So for example, shaving peak with air conditioning load. And so that's a program that we're looking to launch and demonstrate in 2022. We've talked briefly about the Habitat project, and frankly, that has gone slowly. Habitat has not been able to, especially in this COVID environment, sort of build at the pace that they had wanted to. And we're encountering some technology gaps, and so we're working through those. So it's actually a really good project for us to sort of work through those specifics on a real small scale. So when we launch larger, we've actually have something that will really work. Electrification, you know, Lisa had mentioned that. There is the Electrification Committee, and we've got two council members sitting on it. And so greatly appreciate your effort with that. And we have one of our staff members that's just leading that work. And then also, as you know, you know, with EVs within town, there's five stations that are currently running, and over 60 that are available through other private organizations. So there's great apps to find those. Building benchmarking, we're in the phase two. So we're looking at buildings over 20,000 square foot. And so we're actually reaching out to all these businesses, and our goal is to get at least 100 of these building participants. And right now, we've already got 80. And what that will lead into is a program that will make recommendations to City Council on different types of changes and suggestions that we might have in the municipal code to further ensure the benchmarking and really the ability to use that benchmarking to assist towards our goal. And distributed energy resources for, at the Platte River area, a little over a year ago, Platte River and the four communities got together to work on a DER strategy document. Well, that strategy document and tool has been completed and basically was, we looked at it at the board in July of this year, and so now that's a tool that the individual utilities can use to analyze different types of DERs and to put in different types of pricing and other things to try and look at how we can move some of these forward, either individually within just our communities, or if there's a lot of larger advantage to do it more broadly across the entire Platte River system. And also, we're looking at sort of a suite of DER and other LPC offerings. And really, I'm looking to have our staff put together sort of like a demonstration grouping of offerings that will include energy storage, electric vehicle chargers, electric water heaters, and so forth. Trying to address some of the many things I've heard at this table from different council members on items and ideas that they have, and I really appreciate that type of input. And then also on the community solar side of things. So we, the City of Longmont is one of eight organizations across the nation that is working with N-Rail and American Public Power Association to really evaluate community solar. The goal of that, and you know, N-Rail's sort of the brains behind it, is to, how can we do community solar here in this community? And so we're really excited about that, and we've actually included budget in 2022 to take an action on that. And so, you know, whether it's like a traditional community solar, whether it's, let's call it an LPC solar farm or whatever, but we're really talking about trying to move solar forward in greater quantity within this community. And so back to the point of reliability and really sustainability here. And so, and one of the things you also hear is, you know, how do we, how do we really migrate or move to just solar in a house, but really solar and battery? So we've got actually a dispatchable resources. Not only is it generated, but then we can store and utilize it at the times that we need it for, you know, peak or other times where renewable energy resources are lacking. And so really, the last thing I want to talk about is sort of how, or what does the team look like that's working to accomplish this? And so right now, with our Strategies and Solution Team, so that's one of the divisions within LPC, we have a group that really has five team members right now. The first is the Director, who's Ann Lutes. We have two key account managers, Chuck Finley and Susan Bartlett. We also have our Energy Strategy Specialist, which is Debbie Seidman, so you've heard her a couple times doing with the benchmarking discussion. And we have the Renewable Energy Strategy Manager, which is Tim Ellis. So that's the team that we have currently. And those are sort of like building the tools, but it doesn't bring all the tools together. It's like these individual thoughts that are out there, but how are they working together? Do we have the technology that makes it work together? Are we able to infuse it in the system when it's needed? Are we able to store it? Do we have really the technology that makes this all work? Do we have the rates and the programs and so forth in there? And so really, the last piece that I'd like to add to the position, add to that group, and it's not in your current budget, but it will be in your next review of the budget for 2022, is this position here, which is the Electric Portfolio Development Manager. So that is a proposed position. And really, this position is the one that sort of leverages, coordinates, and synchronizes. So like I said, we have all these individuals, sort of this, you know, separate items, but we put that together in a portfolio. And so I pulled some bullets out of the job description, which is consolidation of virtual and real energy production and curtailment into a single dispatchable renewable energy portfolio. I don't want to say it's so simple that you'll have a single button that says more or less, you know, but, but you've sort of got to drive to that. And so you've got a set of algorithms that are sitting in the background that's analyzing the data, and it's what's seeing what Platte River is producing, and, you know, what the demand is and what's in storage, and putting that all together to really maximize the use of what renewable energy resources that you have. And the second item is to analyze that resource Mitch, mix, and are there additional resources that we need, and what type are they? And are the control systems, the other physical electronic tools in place? And then the third bullet there is develop a dynamic, safe, and reliable system, and I mentioned this earlier. My goal is at about 10% of Longmont's overall energy consumption to enable, basically able to control that in some way, to really enable and support the transition to 100% renewable. So you hear that a lot popping up in DER conversations, and that's sort of a goal. And frankly, to get to that goal, you know, it's something that we need to contribute, you know, it can't, there are issues with reliability and cost if we don't, and I think we can do this really well, and we can move this forward. I talked about synchronize the portfolio and customers with other renewable energy resources. And the last is just really coordinate, coordinate with internal, external teams to meet these objectives. So this is a proposed position that you'll see in your next budget, but this position really brings it home. And so with that, I had also heard, you know, a question from Councilmember Peck about resiliency. And so with this, I'm hoping that some of the additional detail you heard tonight will help address those questions. You may have more, and we're certainly open to providing more information, but it's an exciting period, and a lot more is going to be coming forward. And Councilmember Martin, you had talked about a couple things. And one, the EV chargers, you know, that we do have the, you know, for $1, you can charge for an hour and so forth. So that's very helpful, but that's why I think we need to have a program that's more specific that can help EV chargers, whether it's at home or in the public setting, and frankly, to get them out to some of the multifamily dwellings that are going to be the hardest to, to get a charger out there. And so we're already looking at those subdivisions differently when we design the electric system in there to provide some opportunity when we're out there digging trenches. And so that's some additional conduit and some forethought to help reduce the barriers and the cost of those barriers to ultimately enable those types of communities to, to have electric chargers. And yeah, so you don't see anything on efficiency works, and so that's something we can work on at Platte River's level. And again, transition to EVs. So there are certainly programs that's been on how to transition to them, but probably the first and foremost is making sure that folks have access to the equipment they need to charge these at home or in their workplace. Otherwise, that's probably your first barrier. If there's no gas station, it's hard to go out and buy something. And so with that, that's the end of my slides, but if there are questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Begley. First, a new one, and it's really a suggestion, but you had this nice bullet item about demonstration resources for beneficial electrification. And there's just an item I'd like to, that to be on that list, which is a test kitchen, because induction ranges are really, really cool, and people need to learn to set their sights on them and need to learn to realize that, that, you know, gas ranges aren't all that. And, and so I just don't want that to get left out of the budget for, for the demonstration system. And then I am interested in, in getting to the bottom of, of why PRPA appears to have abandoned in efficiency works, the EV transition, because they did have a group buy, and they, and they did have the juice box network. And, you know, you can't have a juice box network that helps you do demand management if nobody's got juice boxes. So I'd really love to find out what happened with that. And I did have a constituent ask me today whether Longmont could run a group buy program for residents. I don't know what, you know, with what's going on with our supply chain, that may have to be deferred. Excuse me. But, you know, there were down-level, lower-range, not-so-marketable EVs that a lot of people would, would like to get into because they, you know, don't need to drive long ranges. And so it'd be wonderful, and, you know, even a social equity thing, if, if, if we could somehow put together a program, maybe through grant winning, that we could help people into those vehicles.
Those are just wonderful suggestions. I've got them listed in, you know, especially with like the EVs. My first real experience in EV, well, my first experience was probably 30 years ago with a Platte River converted car, and it was just a lead sled at the time, but, you know, I actually drove my first one while I was in Aspen, when we had one of those types of demonstration events, and it just, it really gets you excited.
They give you whiplash.
Yes, it will. Make sure you're pressed in the seat before you accelerate.
Yeah, but I don't know why PRPA has abandoned that, but I would like to know.
Okay, I'll do a follow-up for you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a few suggestions or comments. First of all, it has been sort of noted nationally that in poor areas of town, there are very few trees, whereas in wealthy areas of town, there are lots of big trees. This, trees really do a great deal of climate mitigation. It's true, they take some water, but it's, it's not, the mitigation, whether it makes up for it. So I'm just wondering if you would think about working with the forestry department to increase the tree canopy where we can, especially in the parts of Main Street that have not gotten the love they deserve on the north and the south, and also in certain, some areas where the people are very low income, they can't put up their own trees. But we could, we could help them. I know that sometimes the city does offer low-cost trees as part of a spring thing. But I think a lot of people don't know about that. So anyway, I was also going to say that there's a development in, that I believe was done by Habitat in Fort Collins. It is a low-income development called Harmony Homes, and they have cottage zoning, and they have solar on all the roofs, they have flash heaters for all the water heating, and they've been there for at least three years. And it would be, I went up, I went up there when they're still working on building them. It's a, it's a really interesting development that I think it might be fun to take your little sport car up there and take a look at it. Also, Tim Ellis is a wonderful resource for the, he's always attends the Sustainability Advisory Board, and he's, he's so knowledgeable, and he really kind of sets people straight when they're going off the rails on some kind of harebrained idea. But he knows a great deal about Jack's Solar Garden, which I don't know if you've been there, but Councilwoman Martin and I went there a few weeks ago, and it was a wonderful tour. It is such an interesting thing because, and I think it's so applicable to a lot of things. What has always driven me crazy about solar is that it takes up a huge amount of land, and you don't do anything else with it. But this, of course, raises the solar so that you can use the land underneath it, and you get solar as well. So you are doubling your economic impact and getting huge benefits for, for everyone. So I know Tim knows a lot about Jack Solar and is interested in, he's talked with Jack, and, I mean, not Jack, with Brian, but he, I would suggest that the city continue to work with, with Brian and see where we can make use of some of the, some of the, his expertise in what we're trying to do with local solar farms. And particularly the, the projects that you already have going on. I think we've got five projects for solarization for the city buildings.
Oh, yes, where we've analyzed the city buildings and for potential solar.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, and that's just a great example of, you know, not, not looking at solar as a singular use.
Yeah, but it's something, you know, and it's very helpful, and we have plenty of solar in Colorado, so. Thank you very much for what you're doing.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your input.
All right, next.
Okay, thank you all.
One last thing I wanted to just clarify something David said. He said this position was going to be in the next budget. And I want you to understand that's the next version of the 2022 budget, not next year's budget.
Mayor Begley, councilmembers, Dennis Pappas with Next Light. I had an opportunity to talk to you a couple of weeks ago about our CIP, and then today I'm here to talk about our, our kind of key investment areas that we have going forward and where we're going to spend these, where we're going to spend our dollars. So the first one, of course, is the fortification and the future proving of our network. Here by the end of the year, we're going to be offering 10-gig services in Longmont. We plan on doing that in the new, we're setting a new hut out at the County Line Substation September 29th. That'll be the first, that'll be the first area that'll have it, and then probably into Meadow or Fordham and along with the service center. And then we'll do two more, two more of the huts in, in 2022. Along with that, we're going to build out to 3,000 new, new units for MDUs, multiple dwelling units, and then recapture, reinforce, and rehabilitation, which is a very important part of the efforts going forward 2022. part of the efforts going forward, 2022 and beyond. The network's seven years old now. I think some of the attitude is, yeah, we've got some, you know, fixes in the network, and we'll get to it tomorrow. Tomorrow has arrived. We're going to, we're going to experience some outages if we're not careful, and one of the initiatives and one of the headcounts that we need for 2022 is another fiber splicer. We need, I need someone that I can dedicate to a rehabilitation effort on a daily basis, not just as we have time that allows that to happen. And so that's one of the requests that we're going to make. In addition to that will be for a network engineer, so that I have an engineer that can go out and really work on the backbone piece of the network to identify the areas where we need to go in and work to get our, the backbone that we have consistent throughout the entire city. One of the other efforts we have here is delighting the customer with our customer experience. We are going to request an additional customer service rep because of the call volumes. Right now, our call wait times are about six minutes. Our bogey that we've set is two minutes, so we're way over on that. For abandoned calls, we have a bogey of 10%. We're about 24% right now. So it's really important that we get another customer service rep in to help relieve some of that pressure for the six that we currently have. Our headcount amounts are about 200 and almost $300,000, which is about 6% increase of our budget. Our revenue this year is going to increase by about $1.2 million is what we anticipate, so we can more than cover the expense of those three additional headcount. We also want to grow our base, our customer base, which currently sits, we're about 100 and, I think I wrote it down, 197 customers away from 24,000. That's our end-of-the-year goal. I really expect that we're going to end at about 24,400 if the trends, you know, keep up for how we've done for the other weeks, for the last three quarters that we've had. We're going to grow our customer base through strategic partnerships. We have strategic partnerships with, of course, LHA for those qualifying customers. Then we have programs where we can provide free or reduced services or cost services to those customers. As you've probably heard, we're doing a partnership with St. Rain Valley School District to provide services to students on the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. We have an RFP that is probably going to hit this next week, and we'll be providing some type of a, either an LTE or CBRS wireless network to probably seven locations across the city where we'll cover about 3,000 students with that. And then Streamwise Solutions is another one for, it's kind of a custom TV solution. We have a lot of cord cutters in the room. What this allows is for everything in your house to be networked together, a digital antenna to be placed in your home, and then we have a partnership with Streamwise where they go in, they do the installation of the antenna, they help with the customer with all the networking, and basically, they're not paying $240 a month for their cable TV bill. They can do over the air for free after they do the initial installation of it. And then probably the, one of the biggest things here is, you know, we're trying to involve this dumb pipe, just a gig service to something that's smart apps. We have a new Wi-Fi 6-enabled router. Basically, the issue has been in homes, you really don't get the coverage. There's kind of areas in your home where you get bad, you know, you have bad connectivity, bad connections. Wi-Fi 6 allows for a further reach in those homes so that you get better, you get better speeds at your computer. We're also going to work on whole-home networking. Streamwise isn't the only ones to do that. We have a group of technicians that are very capable of doing in-home networking and that. And then, of course, we're working with Power Side with LPC on AMI and to provide a number of AMI locations here where, you know, that, all the AMI, the meters will be aggregated together at a single point, and then the traffic will be carried back. Not a surprise from a budget standpoint, capital and non-operating budgets, 42%, $4.5 million of that is our debt service. That goes away in 2029. So as you can see here, and then we'll show on the next slide, our revenues will ramp up, and our, you know, expendable dollars will ramp up at that time. Repair and maintenance is the biggest driver on O&M, on the O&M side. I'm not sure if you were aware, we had an outage this weekend. It impacted quite a few customers. We lost the back plane of a box in the Harvard Substation. Not cheap, we're going to spend probably $85,000 to $95,000 on new cards so that we have adequate maintenance backups available to us. And so what you're going to see is you're going to see our construction over the next few years, you're going to see kind of our construction spend going down, but the spend from a operating and from a maintenance standpoint is going to go up because we just got to keep upgrading the network and maintaining the network. We have some very hungry squirrels in the city that do quite a bit of damage. So what we do in those cases, we're taking down the old non-shielded cable that was initially put up because that was kind of the fast and easiest way to do it, and we're putting up armored, shielded cable in those areas where we still don't have a bearing, you know, we still can't get in there and get it buried. We are doing some work on the north side of Highway 66 here soon. We have two areas where we're going to start shooting across 66 to provide service over there. Schlegel is an area in town. We turned up service to half of Schlegel to last Friday, and we'll probably turn it up to the rest of Schlegel by the end of this week. So we're making good strides there. This is kind of our financial outlook. As you can see, in 2029, once the debt's retired, we really have a huge increase in our cash flow. And we'll have, you know, a lot of working capital that we can stick back in the network and then try to expand beyond where we're at today and hopefully help out some of our, some of our neighboring communities with the service that we provide. Okay, any questions for me?
Councilmember Christensen.
Yeah, my sympathies for the squirrels. They're just so annoying. They eat your peaches, they eat your plums, they eat your phone, they, oh, if we could calculate how much damage they do, it's... Anyway, I wanted to compliment you on the, your customer service because there's a guy who, period, about every couple of years, somebody does something somewhere, and everything is out, and I've written down all the instructions, and I usually can fix it by hitting the third button from the right and holding it down for three seconds after unplugging everything and replugging it. But it doesn't always work, and the guy who is the tech support guy is so, he gets back to you right away. He's really courteous and funny and always helps me in no time at all, so, and is very patient. So just tell your customer service people thanks, and tech support people, rather.
Councilwoman, thank you very much for the compliments. Appreciate it. We have a team of six of those technical service reps that I think that are all very capable of doing exactly that for our customers, and I think that's what sets us aside, is the customer service that we do provide. We're local, we are very responsive to a customer's needs, and if you have an issue that those TSRs can't resolve, we get a technician with out there with, you know, out there within hours, so.
All right, nobody's in the queue. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right, Mayor, Council, I'm going to try to take this home. We're going to start with the budgeted positions, new positions that are included in this proposed 2022 budget. We have 31 new FTE included, which brings our total budgeted positions in the budget to 1,042.76 FTE. So there are 13 different funds on this slide that have at least anywhere from 9.95 FTE being added in the general fund to all the way to less than a half FTE in the electric fund. I won't go through them all, but you'll see the second largest one there is the five FTE in the Public Safety Fund.
I'll jump in with Jim on some of these, too.
So what I plan to do, I mean, we have a bunch of slides here, and it has each one of those with description. You have seen this description in the budget message, you have seen it in our council communication. I'm not going to read these descriptions. I will just touch the, and name each of the FTE that are being added in the budget. Stop us if you'd like to ask about any of them. If I can't answer them, or Harold can't answer them, there are probably some teammates behind us that can probably jump in and do that. So the first is one FTE neighborhood, and you've heard about some already tonight, so you probably don't need to ask about those, but some of these you haven't heard. One FTE Neighborhood Resource Coordinator in Community Neighborhood Resources from a variety of funds. One FTE Counselor in Senior Services.
And I'm going to jump in on this one. We all have talked about the increasing demand to serve our older population, and what we're seeing is the number of, I mean, this isn't necessarily to do a lot of new, this is just to manage the number of people that are coming to us asking for service, and then obviously assisting with some of the work that we're doing with the Housing Authority, but the demand's growing significantly for senior services right now.
And then one FTE Librarian in the, Librarian One in the library. One FTE Social Equity Coordinator in Community Services from multiple funds. One FTE Development Project Administrator in Planning and Development Services.
And I'll touch on this one because I know there were some questions before on this one. Generally, this is something we've been looking at. I mean, we've had conversations on a similar type position in previous budget years. Unfortunately, when we had the other needs, we just couldn't fund that position, but the intent for this really is to streamline a lot, some of our processes, increase communication with people who are in the development process, and help us facilitate and reduce the number of times that we have to come back for resubmittals. Obviously, we're going to focus on high priority and significant projects, whether that's in the affordable world or large economic development projects. But the other piece on this, Tim asked me, our councilmember Waters asked a question, how are you going to measure this? For me, it's how much does this reduce the number of times that Joni or I or Dale have to come in and engage in different projects because we're seeing that a lot, but it's really to facilitate and streamline the communication between the development community and our development services staff.
The one FTE GIS Analyst in Planning and Development Services. Two FTE Parks and Open Space Rangers in Public Works and Natural Resources.
Yeah, let me, so, sorry, Jim.
Go ahead.
One of the things that we're really struggling with in terms of GIS and really being able to fully envision what we can do with that system, we don't have a position to do GIS work in Planning and Development Services. That is absorbed by planners, and I think to truly build the system and utilize the GIS system to its fullest extent, and I think, I know, based on experience in other communities, you need this dedicated position, where obviously, we're also working in how we can bring this together from an organizational perspective, but really, the intent of this is also to streamline the processes and provide more information to the community so they can get it and it's easier to address versus having to search for it and find it, similar to some other questions here. And then the two FTE Parks and Open Space Rangers, we all know what we've been dealing with at McIntosh and what we've been dealing with in other areas, and we've talked about that, and we really feel like in order to manage the increased demand, and again, this is just managing the increased demand in our existing parks and open space, we need those positions.
We have one FTE Data and Innovation Analyst in Public Works and Natural Resources Business Services, and that's from multiple funds. And one FTE Human Resources Business Partner, two, in Shared Services.
So on this one, you've heard me talk about the data and innovation work, the data analysts, the data work we need to do as an organization so we can really look at, you know, what are we doing, how are we measuring it, holding ourselves accountable. This is going to have an overarching view and work with the entire organization as we continue to move down this road. The FTE in Human Resources, this is in response to many state laws that we now have to manage in terms of things like equal pay and equal work, and just the same process that we did a year ago is now incredibly more complicated in terms of what we have to do. And so, again, this is just helping us manage the gap in workload that we have right now.
One FTE Procurement Specialist in Purchasing. One half FTE Retirement Administrator in Finance. One FTE Clinician, two, in Community Health and Resilience from the Public Safety Fund. One FTE Community Services Officer Detective in Police from the Public Safety Fund. Two FTE Core Paramedics in Community Health and Resilience from the Public Safety Fund.
So on these, I want to go back to the FTE Core. So the one FTE Community Service Officer and Detectives, what we're really finding is, I'm going to separate that out, the caseload that we have now coming in and the work that an actual detective is doing is outpacing what we can manage operationally. And so this is not a certified police officer, this is a community service officer, which is a civilian position that can help those individuals process the cases that we have right now and where we can hit them more quickly. The FTE and the Core Paramedics in Community Health, and can you go back a slide, Jim? And the FTE Clinician in Community Health and Resiliency, and you're going to see a few more of these positions. They're new because we're moving them into the budget and with ongoing funding. These are positions that were grant-funded in Lead and Core, and so we're bringing them into ongoing funding now. And there's some more where you will see this.
Okay, then one FTE Victim Advocate in Community Health and Resilience from the Public Safety Fund.
That's another grant-funded position that we need to move to ongoing funding.
Portion.
Okay, portion.
One FTE Volunteer and Evaluation Coordinator at the Museum from the Museum Services Fund.
Keep going.
One FTE Network Engineer in Broadband. One FTE Customer Service Representative in Broadband. One FTE Fiber Optic Technician in Broadband. One FTE Airport Operations and Maintenance Tech from the Airport Fund.
So let me touch on this one a little bit. I know Council mentioned this. This is something we've been really evaluating in terms of the airport. We had one individual out there where, you know, as you all know, you know, David passed away, and so this really highlighted that we need additional support there. It's unfortunate that we've been working on this position for a few years, and he's not here to realize it, but we're also looking at taking a next step in this and really working with our operations division to streamline and try to do things more efficiently, effectively, which will create more redundancy within the system, but then at the same time, allow us to be a little more specific in terms of the airport position in the future, in terms of what we're looking for. Basically, the way it's been structured for years, you had one person that had to be able to understand the FAA, manage the grants, also be able to pull the FOD sweeper on the runways and do other things. And so I think this is going to be a big benefit, and based on some of the conversations we've had recently, I think we can achieve even more with this position.
Two FTE Natural Resources Technician in Public Works and Natural Resources Open Space Fund. And one FTE Sanitation Supervisor in Public Works and Natural Resources from the Sanitation Fund. One FTE Assistant Director of Engineering Services from the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund. One FTE Civil Engineer, one slash two, from the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund. One FTE Construction Inspector in Public Works and Natural Resources from multiple funds. And a half FTE Water Conservation Specialist in Public Works and Natural Resources from the Water Fund. And we have three-quarter FTE Grant Coordinator in Public Works and Natural Resources Business Services. Half FTE Sustainability Specialist from the Water Fund. And a quarter FTE Sustainability Program Coordinator, again, from the Water Fund. And a half FTE Neighborhood Resource Specialist from the Sustainability Fund. And one FTE Environmental Regulatory Specialist from the Storm Drainage Fund. So it's a summary of the positions. I do want to point out that, as I said in the beginning, we had 9.95 FTE added in the general fund. General Fund. We did have over 40 requests for FTE within the General Fund. So moving into the LDDA budget, going to run through this quickly. I gave you quite a bit of information within the communication. I'll not get into that level of detail. This is, seems to be missing the first slide, but I did have a first slide that listed the other six DDA funds that are also part of the DDA budget. The Operating Fund, the Construction Fund, the Arts and Entertainment Fund, and also we have a Capital Fund and a Debt Service Fund and a Facade Improvement Loan Fund. So the Operating Fund budget is for '22 is $344,000. It's an increase of almost $30,000 over '21. And a little over $9,000 of that increase is in the Salary and Benefits area. Over $20,000 is in O&amp;M. And of that $20,000, over $15,000 is for Parklet Maintenance. The LDDA Construction Fund gets its funding from Tax Increment Revenue. We have here $185,000 of uses of those monies that are scheduled for 2022. Alley Cameras at $100,000, Pedestrian Metrics for $10,000, Mural Cultural Project for $15,000, Parking Study Update for $25,000, Parklet Maintenance for $10,000, and Economic Vitality for $25,000. And so the total use of TIF revenue in the '22 budget is for $276,000. So besides those projects I just went through, we also do take from or fund through TIF revenue project management for those projects from the DDA staff, and that's $32,900. And then every year, we do put a certain amount of money away towards infrastructure replacement into a sinking fund. This year, it's $58,742. And it's tied to how much of the city's mill levy goes towards the DDA TIF.
Jim?
Yes.
How many slides are there? The only reason I ask is there's a couple people in the queue, and I usually wait till the end of the presentation, but I don't want to go for 45 minutes.
I probably have about five more slides in the DDA.
All right, let's finish the slides, then we'll come back. Keep going, I'm sorry.
In the 2022 budget, we have $1.342 million budgeted for TIF revenue. So you can see we're utilizing $276,000 here, and then in the Arts and Entertainment Fund, we're using another $375,000 of TIF funding to fund expenses in this budget. So it's a budget of $413,000 for '22, an increase of almost $60,000 over '21, $10,000 increase in salary and benefits, almost $50,000 increase in O&amp;M. And within that, it's $26,000 in events and the Vista Program and $14,000 in printing. Downtown Parking Fund budget is nine, almost $100,000 for '22, increase of close to $20,000 over '21. Increases are in small amounts in salary and benefits, an increase of seven and a half, 7.5 thousand in O&amp;M, and $10,000 in parking lot improvements. And then the GID budget is $151,000 for '22, increase of almost $30,000 over '21. And most of that increase is in downtown, in the GID area, Maintenance and Cleaning of $14,250. And then another $11,300 increase in administrative transfer fee to the city for '22. That's all on the DDA, so I can stop there if there are questions related to that.
Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. I actually, I hit the button when we got to the end of the overview of personnel.
Okay.
So I'm all good here.
All right.
Kimberly, I'm all good here, so.
Do you want?
No, no, I would like to, I would like to ask my question. I made, I shared this observation with Harold. It's not so much a question as it is an observation and maybe a request. It's a kind of comment and request I made before, and maybe it's just not reasonable given the scope of how we operate as a city. But 31 FTE, and when, and you go through the narrative that Jim just went through, I can, I think I can surmise, you know, what might be different in 2023 because of additional people and work in 2022. But as we've listened to the presentations, and let me just preface this, we have great people. I have total confidence in you and everybody in the crew to make best and highest use of every dollar that we spend. This is not about questioning that, either competency of the people or the intent or how the dollars will be used well. But if I'm asked tomorrow, or when we approve the budget, Tim, what will be different in 2023 because of additional 31 people in 2022? I could, I think I could answer that question based on what I just heard about LPC, right? We're going to reduce response time from five minutes to two minutes. We're going to reduce from 24 seconds to 10 seconds. I mean, I heard some metrics, and we're going to grow from what I think I heard was 24, four, or five customers, and then there'll be a target for 2,000. I mean, that was, for me, it's like, okay, we could answer the question, how will we know, right? Did we accomplish in 2022 what we thought we were going to accomplish? And I could, when I, in David's presentation, he made reference on whatever slide it was to these objectives, it was his last slide. And the bullets on that slide, I think I could turn into objectives because there were pretty strong hints, but they're not stated that way. And so even there, it's, it would be hard to know how to answer the question, what's different because you've got 30 more people or 31 more people on board in 2022 than you had in 2021? The appeal would be in some way to say, and maybe it's only when we're adding personnel to say, here's what we're going to accomplish. And I'm certain with the Equity Coordinator, you'd expect to see goals and objectives across units, right? Departments and divisions.
Correct.
That are specific and measurable in terms of the equity effort. But that would be, it'd be good to see that. That's, that would be one of the outcomes, right? That you would even have that structure and then the accountability that goes with it. I'm just saying, it would be helpful to me as one council member to feel like I'm doing my job, just in terms of accountability, to see greater specificity. Now, all that said, specifically the additional position in planning, I think that's the ombudsman, right?
Correct.
Role. And you mentioned you and Joni having to be called in less frequently on projects, which would be one way to measure, oh, that's would be different, you'd get to spend your time differently. But I also think that's about speed, right?
It is, it's about speed, yes.
And so then, you know, one outcome in how we would know is you'd survey both applicants and staff, right? With a couple of questions periodically, quarterly, at the end of the year, you know, on a pretty, you know, simple scale. Did we or did we not reduce time without compromising quality, right? Of the decisions we're making, because that's not, that's not the intent. It's just generally, as we're about to approve a 300 and, what's the top line, was it 389 or 366?
I know, it's like 390, right?
Yeah, I, that's right, right under 390. We're going to approve a $390 million budget. We're going to use every one of those dollars well. But, but when this, in this part of it, it would be, for me, helpful to be able to have more specificity on what's going to be different and how will we know because of the additional capacity we're, you know, we're bringing into the organization. The last comment about the ombudsman, a couple of years ago when we talked about this, I thought it was less about cost than it was about conflicts. That to put somebody in that role, put them in a real conflicted position in planning or in, with engineers and public works and natural resources. And so we contracted that out for someone to work with nonprofits, right?
Correct.
That had applied, because whoever we were bringing in wouldn't have those conflicts. Their total interest was in the client. But this is going to be different, right? This, we're going to have somebody who is on the payroll and they're taking on big projects. So have we learned something through that experience with the ombudsman that was working with nonprofits that kind of informs this one?
I think it streamlines the conversation. So what I've seen where the, where it's been successful, and so I'll talk a little bit about VCP, is that position's been able to really say, here's what we need to do, here's what you need to do, and help marshal it through. Now, at the end of the day, even in some of these cases where they've worked, it's whether or not they do it, but I think they help bridge the gap in the understanding in the system. I think the conflict still does exist. We still have conflict in the point, even on other projects where you're in a regulatory position, but then you're also having to facilitate on some of that. And so that doesn't go away in this, but it really is that different position that can blend that gap, but then also facilitate the movement through. And when things start getting hung up, can also facilitate a conversation to get it resolved based on what we're dealing with because there's a lot of times when we get in, there's really no magic to what we do. It's really facilitating the conversation so everyone can get on the same page and then marshal some of those things through to make sure both sides are getting their time requirements.
This is one, for whatever it's worth, when we, we'll come back, and I'll bring this back at some point before we close out this year. If I think about the motion that Councilmember Martin made, that Councilmember Hiduggal Ferring amended, to bring residential development projects that are in the process for more than a year, or when they get to the year, bring them here for review. This particular position, I would assume, is likely to minimize the number of times that would have to happen. That would be part of the intent. Is that fair?
Hopefully, yes. I mean, that's how we're going to be evaluating it. I think one of the things we realized is, when does a year start? Because some of it is just statutory time.
Sure.
So we're going to, but, exactly, because, so for example, on a project, I mean, this is kind of the nuance we get into some of these. It was Joni facilitating a conversation with other property owners to get a document signed that had nothing to do with us, but was definitely bogging down the process.
Rights away.
All of that stuff. And so Joni was having to engage in that, or something on our side where we needed a navigation easement and we couldn't get a navigation. But when you start looking at who's spending time, or when even Dale's been in the mix with us when we get into it, it really is, hopefully, we're going to be able to see a result where that's not happening and we can work at our appropriate levels as we're doing this, and that's the desire.
So for me, this one connects across a couple of just different priorities that we, you know, we keep coming back to affordable housing and attainable housing, et cetera. This is one where if there was an objective, I would have said, clearly stated objective, because every day that we spend that we don't need to adds money, the cost to a home buyer, right? Ultimately. That that one, when we'd elevate to say, that's, that ought to be an objective we all own, right? That ought to be an objective for the council and for you and for the organization. And so let's, on a quarterly basis, monitor our performance and make mid-course adjustments as we need to. It's that important, right? In terms of getting everybody going in the same direction. And you couldn't do that for all of them, but there are some of them that I would think you would want us invested in to that level, and that we ought to hold ourselves accountable for at that level.
Yeah.
Because the stakes are so high, right? And the people for whom the stakes exist aren't, appear, right? They're the folks we're, you know, trying to figure out how to serve, so.
And we can, and we can bring that information and we can have it brought to you back before this is approved because, you know, you heard me talk about the procurement specialist or the HR specialist.
Yeah.
In the budget reviews, I talked about that. So how long does it take us to hire a position? And then what's the impact on how long it takes us to hire a position based on the operating group?
Yeah.
Or how long does it take us to get there? So we can get that to council because I think it's important for you.
Again, this is not, I know we got, this is about trying to get us all invested in this together in ways and accountable to get us going in the same direction, so, thanks.
Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Waters, so you know that there's a number of staff here tonight. I asked them all to be here and be ready to answer questions about metrics on these positions, but we will put it together and get it to you so you have it all in an upcoming packet, so. All right, so.
One second, there's also, Councilmember Hiduggal Ferring has a question. Sorry, Jim.
Thank you. So yeah, this one's actually going back to the FTE again, so it's like a while ago. Go back, back. So, and you know, I do agree with Councilmember Waters' comment about, you know, having those goals stipulated. You know, I keep going back, and we talked a little bit about this, the SMART goal. You know, as a teacher, I use it for every bit of data that I analyze with students. You know, that specific, measurable, attainable, you know, relevant, relevant, is it relevant? You know, because some of these things, yeah, they're nice to have, but are they relevant to our, to our major scope of what we're trying to accomplish as a city as a whole? And timely. So, you know, just going back and looking at the quiet zones, you know, having that sit for so long. And I know it's not the fault of the city, there were other factors involved, but just kind of moving, moving these things along for the betterment of our city. But I actually want to go back to the FTE for the core team, and I talked a little bit with Harold about, about this, and I appreciate that, I'm glad that you had mentioned that it's not new FTE, it's actually FTE that we've had in place, but it's, the grant is waning.
Correct.
And so I guess for me, that's, this is something that I'm, I'm very passionate about continuing to have. I have a son with a disability, a daughter who has survived multiple suicide attempts. I think, you know, looking at what happened in our family at that time, had, when we called law enforcement for help, if we had had trained people, it would have really changed, you know, just our family dynamics for several years afterwards. Because, you know, it was just, I think, you know, we called the police about 30 seconds in, I regretted that moment. It was very much criminalizing her, you know, her state of crisis. And, and so to have qualified individuals and not putting it on law enforcement officers to take that, that role of people who are in crisis, people who are in drugs and are not thinking straight, and, you know, we, trying to get people to, to work with these individuals in crisis who are trained to do this so it doesn't escalate a situation and it's not criminalizing people who are dealing with drug addiction and mental health crisis. So, you know, and having said that, now going back, you know, have we, and I, you know, and I'm setting appointments to meet with folks in public safety as well to further discuss this, but looking at, you know, our leads and core team, are they where they're at right now? Do they have who they need, what they need in order to keep the program going strong? Do we have, you know, we're making up some of the positions for grants that, you know, as the grant is waning, but do we have more funding to be able to support and keep this program going, ongoing in other means? Not just FTE, maybe additional FTE? Because the other thing I'm hearing in having conversations with folks at Mental Health Partners is, you know, people are burnt out. You know, teachers are burnt out, police officers are burnt out, everybody who works in the public, y'all. It's, it's been a very trying time. And if we are stretching people to the max and they're having to deal with people in crisis, I just worry that we're going to lose a lot of really good talent because we're stretching people too thin. Now, I could be totally wrong and everything's fine, I just, I'm continuing conversations, but that's kind of, you know, burning, burning concerns I have, and I want to make sure we don't get to that point.
I think this is going to have to be something that we're going to have to continually evaluate in every budget process to see where we want to go and where we want to be.
Uh huh.
Again, in the Public Safety Fund, this gets into this other conversation. You know, we're looking at these within the Public Safety Fund, so you have limited scope, but then if you look at it then and you go, well, we want to bring the General Fund in, remember, we've gone for Public Safety Fund to increase the revenue stream there.
Mm-hmm.
General Fund, we haven't really increased it, so that's where we're balancing priorities across, and we, and we have to look at that because there is a finite amount to this.
Yes, yes.
The other thing is that, and Zach and I have actually started talking about this, is there's another piece to this. So when we looked at how we benchmark our clinicians, we looked at it in a different way. We said, who's going to have emergency, we tiered it in three different levels to try to look at it. But I think the other component to this that we're going to have to really work on is cross-organizational collaboration and how are we connecting dots when they can be connected versus just holding it in one area? And that goes to the middleware project that we kind of talked to you all. And that goes to the middleware project that we kind of talked to you all about in connecting dots. And so Zach and I had a conversation this morning about this is, we've also got a shift to where this just isn't a public safety conversation. This is an organization conversation where we're bringing more resources to bear because then you can do it more efficiently and effective. And the more we work as a team, the stronger we're going to be as an organization. But to your first question, this is something we're going to have to keep an eye on and we're going to have to work it on every annual budget.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. That's it for the Q.
All right. I'm going to jump back ahead here to the marijuana tax. So the tax was initiated in 2018, so the tax revenue for the first year was $265,000. As you know, the vote for that allocated 50% of the tax to affordable housing. In 2020, our revenue was $562,000, half of it again, affordable housing. And then we had $87,000 towards Human Service Agency funding and $50,000 for early childhood education is how we allocated that in building the 2020 budget based on council direction. For 2021, the budgeted revenue is $410,000 and half of that, again, affordable housing, we allocated by council direction, $67,000 and change for Longmont Public Media, $50,000 to the library feasibility study, $150,000 to early childhood education, and $70,000 to the 529 jump program. The 2021 uses includes $132,558 of fund balance from the prior year's unallocated revenue. That was like from 2019's activity, revenue beyond really what we had budgeted in the initial budget. And we would be having that on an annual basis as long as there's marijuana tax that comes in over the annual budget. So this year, we have the projected tax revenue for '22 at $600,000, so half of that's going to affordable housing. We have another $150,000 in fund balance this time left over from 2020 operations where revenue exceeded our projections. We're leaving a little bit more in fund balance. I think if we ever get to the point where the marijuana tax doesn't reach our budgeted projections, we'll need some fund balance to have a cushion. And so right now, I think a little less than $10,000 that we left in there. So we have $450,000 available to be directed by the council. Some options that the council have identified included mental health and, again, the 529 jump program. And so we will need final direction from council on how to use this unallocated portion. Don't need it tonight. You can give it to us two weeks from tonight if you choose when we come to you for final direction, but just wanted to let you know you have that much available to you.
Cool. Thanks, Jim. We look forward to that discussion in two weeks. What day will that be?
That would be the 5th, I believe, of study session. So, so we're to the point where we're going to be able to try to answer other questions you have, and I think we'd like to start by talking about that golf course clubhouse. And Teresa's going to hand out a page from the CIP, two pages from the CIP related to the Public Improvement Fund, because I know the city manager wants to take you through that. Before he does that, or as you're passing that out, I'm going to begin to give you a little bit of background. You know, last week, somebody asked how long I've been here, and it's a long, long time. So they look to me for this institutional memory, but the reality is, is I don't remember much anymore. So I ran upstairs at the break to see, I wanted to get some information about the golf course, and I pulled out a comprehensive annual financial report that has the design of the golf course on the cover, you know, appropriately enough, back from 1997. But, so what I was able to pull out is that we, we did a lease back in the mid-'90s for $5.5 million for the Ute Creek Golf Course. We did have some money, you know, on top of that, I think, from other sources, but that most of it was a lease that was going to be paid back from a golf revenues. And because the golf enterprise is an enterprise fund, and so the operation is supposed to be self-supported, and that's how that was all designed to work back then, and the business plan for that was that we were going to see growth in revenues from that golf course. We had a lease that was going to increase, it's kind of ballooning. It was going to start in $100,000 and then go up to about $300,000 and eventually get up to the $600,000 plus level. And I think it was going to pay off in about 15 years. That I don't have with me to be able to validate or verify, but I do recall that's about what it was, 12 to 15 years or so. So pretty much a little bit after the turn of the century and you had an economic downturn, you know, golf didn't do what everyone expected it was going to do in the '90s. And all that growth that the golf did see in the '90s started to slow down. So I just want to give you a little bit of data. So I pull out this, this comprehensive annual financial report from 2000, from 1999, and the revenue for the golf enterprise fund was $2,459,000. Pulled out last year, 2019's annual financial report. So we, you heard the city manager say we did really good in 2020, so I'm not going to use that year. I'm going to compare the 2019. And that revenue for the golf enterprise fund was $2,764,000, a $300,000 increase over 20 years. 12% growth in 20 years. This is why this project sits unfunded in our CIP 25 years later. We struggled to even pay the cost for the original golf course. We will be paying that off in two years. We refinanced that lease sometime after the turn of the century, and that didn't help. We refinanced it in 2010, paying off the lease entirely, getting the bank out of it and using somebody's crazy idea about the Bank of Fleet Fund to, to instead extend this lease all the way out here to the 25th year or so, that it's going to pay off a little bit early than we thought back then, but it's going to pay off in 2023 after a payment that's been about $130,000 a year for over 10 years. So we never come close to paying the $660-something thousand maximum payment that was built into that financial plan back in the mid-'90s. That really is, just give you the idea of where the history of that was. And I will also point out that I've worked with the city councils throughout all those years, and they've always wanted the golf fund to be self-supporting and not tax-supported. And that's why that, that, that project did not receive any funding. So you wanted to take me through the Public Improvement Fund?
Yes, I don't. If there's any other, if there's questions for Jim, we can go to this. So obviously, this was something that Councilmember Waters submitted when we asked the question. And, and so when we were looking at it, I kind of want to talk about the Public Improvement Fund and what we had in there. And so historically, and, 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 Councilmember Waters asked this question earlier. For me, the Public Improvement Fund has been an interesting experience for me since I've been here. I think in my first budget with you all was in 2012, and I think in that budget, we were trimming the Public Improvement Fund and trying to balance it out in future years. And that's been something that we've been going through on a periodic basis. And, and so when we, when we looked at this, I think we've continually adjusted projects, so whether it's flooring, whether it's boiler replacements, roofing, HVAC, we were constantly having to toggle these projects because we didn't have enough funding. This was the year that, this was probably the only year, I think, we haven't had a hard time balancing this since I've been here, where we had more capacity. But in that, what we, what we also funded was the $3.7 million for the first and main transit station.
Which most of that is general fund.
General fund, yeah. That's mostly general fund, but we included it in this. And so we were looking at it, and then we were really bringing back other projects that we had to delay. The other thing is when we talked about this and we talked about the bond initiatives that we put in place, you know, one of the things we said is, this is what we need to, and I mentioned this earlier, this is what we need to get the golf course on its, on its feet. And then COVID hit, and, and so as I mentioned earlier, we now know we're probably going to have to add more dollars to the maintenance facility because we're just seeing cost increases all over the place. But the interesting thing about it is, and I didn't think about it until later, when we, a few years ago, when we were going through the golf fund, we, we talked about, and as council, you may, I don't know who was on here or not, but when we talked about demand pricing and we made the switch to demand pricing in terms of what we needed to do, that did actually have a tangible impact on the revenue stream that we're seeing in the golf fund. It's only been, what, two or three years? But immediately, it flipped a switch and we went from barely making it to making more money. Last year, we added about a half a million dollars to the fund balance in the golf fund. If you heard Karen earlier, and I had to go double-check this, she goes, we're $300,000 ahead of, of where we were last year. So theoretically, you know, we could be in the neighborhood of $800,000 adding it to the golf fund. So that's a fairly significant financial shift. So as I was looking at this, what I failed to mention in the conversation earlier is when we started doing this, we started evaluating, what do we need to do to improve the golf courses so we can increase play and do other things? And redoing the clubhouses and finishing the Ute Creek Clubhouse is actually something we talked about. We couldn't quite figure it out then because we were still on the front end of this. And we had the fire at Twin Peaks. And so we were actually able to redo the Twin Peaks Clubhouse because of the fire, and we made that difference. And so as I was thinking about this, one of the runs that we made actually when we were looking at the maintenance facility was, is there a way to design it on-site to, to use the money? I don't know if Jim remembers this, but to, to do both, do the maintenance facility and finish the clubhouse, but that didn't really work out well. I think where we are now, based on where the funding is, to answer the question on this, I think we can allocate the design cost out of this year, out of the golf fund based on the performance, to actually get a real cost to see what's it going to cost to do this, because the 5.4 million is a, is a swag, I think. And, and my recommendation would be the golf fund, actually go into the next level, do the design cost, figure out what it is. We have one full more, we have one more full payment in terms of paying off the debt that Jim was talking about, then the next year is a half payment. By the time we get there on this and utilizing the golf fund, that'll give us a real number to target and then let us really evaluate what the golf fund can do and what options we have available and, and approach it that way. So it is something we've been trying to figure out. We know we need to finish it. And, you know, a golf course of that caliber with a clubhouse of that nature, we can do more and we think we can increase revenue, but that would be how I would propose we approach that situation. Operationally, I, you know, that's kind of what I was thinking. So if, yeah, if you all want to do a motion.
Want to make a motion? Oops, sorry. Dr. Waters?
I'll move that we take that approach. Can I add to that, that it become something that goes maybe on Tony's to-do list to look for a partner in terms of a potential public-private partnership when the time comes, once you've done the design work?
Yeah, yeah, because I want to do a public-private partner. I mean, that's a way to manage it.
So that's a motion.
All right. We'll restate the motion, please.
The motion is to take the approach that Harold just described, to get the payoff, make the last payment, use, use money this year out of the golf fund to do the design work. Next year, I guess, pay off the, the balance of the lease, is that what?
Well, we have the last, we have a partial payment in the next year, but Jim and I can sort that out.
To manage that and then to look for a public, a private sector partner when the time comes that we know what the, the real scope of the work would be.
And the only thing I would say is let us get through the design of the maintenance facility first, before we start that. Yeah.
Okay. You want to second that? All right. It was made by Dr. Waters, seconded by Councilmember Martin. Anybody want to talk on this issue? Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. I think it was a good motion, Councilmember Waters, but I also thought that we should wait to the design before we look for a partner, because we don't know what costs we're talking about until we get that design phase in. So would you mind a friendly amendment to split that vote? I mean, that amendment?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. So I move that we amend the motion to go with the city manager's suggestion of going through the design stage of the, of the project.
In fact, I'll just withdraw the second part of that motion and just leave it right there.
Okay.
All right. You second that, Councilmember Martin? All right. All in favor, say, any more debate on the issue? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right. Motion carries unanimously. Sorry, you were a nay? Sorry. Councilmember Christensen, I didn't hear you. She was a nay, so the motion carries six to one with Councilmember Christensen in the dissent. All right, Jim?
Thank you, guys.
Other questions? We are here. Otherwise, we're finished.
Oh, okay. Anything else? All right. Anything else at all, Harold? Oh, Dr. Waters?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I appreciate the additional information. I'd forgotten that it was the marijuana tax that where we took the $70,000 for, but could somebody follow up the 529 jump committee, right, that I'm still connected with? We've, we have contracted with them for one installment of our, of what we'd agreed to. I don't think we've transacted that this year yet, because I would, in fact, I got just an email today from Josh Atherton at the foundation. So the money's in the budget, if we could get that done, and then, and then we'll obviously talk about what to do with 2022. Thanks.
The only thing I will add is, about the time we finish this budget, we're going to be bringing you all in as the LHA board into the LHA budget, so.
Can't wait. All right. So anything else, Harold?
That's it.
All right. With that, let's go on to, I believe the only thing left is mayor and council comments. Anybody? All right. Councilmember Peck?
I just want to let people know that on October 3rd, at the Boulder County Fairgrounds, Sustainable Resilient Longmont is going to have their EV fair. So we were talking about EVs. If you want to know, see some cool cars and talk to some dealers, October 3rd at the Boulder County Fairgrounds. It's always a lot of fun.
Dr. Waters?
Tomorrow morning at 7:15 in the, hopefully, everyone will see it in the museum, it's our early, it's the business of early, it's the business of early childhood education business, right? And hopefully, we have a good turnout. The governor will be here at 9 o'clock and make some comments. I'm certain to promote his new Office of Early Childhood Education, but it's a chance to kind of motivate, hopefully, our business community to lean in to this initiative. So hopefully, we'll see everybody there.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Harold, anything? Eugene, anything? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
All right. I'll second it. It was moved by Councilmember Peck, seconded by me. All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carries. We are adjourned.
It scares me every time.
Thanks for the history lesson.
Thanks.
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 Thanks.